I'd like to call us a meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order. It's Monday, July first, seven P M. I'd like to record that all members of the planning commission, all seven of us are here. Please, please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the U S flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Can I have a motion to approve the current agenda?
So move.
Move by member Reese. And I have support by member Nordike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Do any of the members present have a conflict of interest that they would like to disclose on any of the issues before us tonight? Okay, not noted. Article five, like to approve the minutes of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Can I have a motion?
Brian will make the motion.
I have a couple edits.
Okay.
First of all, the, the minutes phenomenal compared to last couple of weeks, so only a couple of material in one, I'm not even certain of, just want to cover our bases. So on page five, do we want to specify, I think we said this in, in the, in the meeting. First line, private street, that's brought up to county standard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I think we, I, I, I'd be most comfortable with a county in front of the word standard, first line, page five.
If it's, did you check if it was said in the meeting? Because we'll go back and verify that it was said.
I believe it was said, I'm sure.
Yep, thank you.
Um, article seven. Fifth line, this is grammar, but the increased height required, special use permit, and reviewed the, and Z A, I think it was zoning administrator, we've been using the acronym, so just say and Z A reviewed. There's like a, a subject in that line there. Page six. And again, I don't, I'm going to do these, but if we want to, there's like three grammatical, if we want to start killing grammaticals, I'm not sure what came out of that, but one, two, three, fourth paragraph. The last two sentences aren't sentences, if you just put an and between them, I think you're good. She showed renderings comparing a six foot versus eight foot gate design and noted she wanted an aesthetic. I think that works. Last paragraph on that page, page six, slash, next last sentence, trustee Nordic expressed the E doesn't need to be capitalized. Article eight. Second sentence, this one's, it was material. She stated applicants want a taller fence in the neighboring properties, it's plural, there are several issues there with fences. Third to the last paragraph on that page, it's actually something that I had said. He was open to having a fence post facing his own property as required, period. The rendering actually showed correctly, set that, that last, even though the rendering showed otherwise is not, is not correct. And then I think a final one is, no, it's two more, sorry. Page ten. We have support, we have Nordic is supporting and opposing. I believe that the opposing wasn't Nordic, I think it was Nord Hope. Chris?
What's that?
Yes, that is.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, because the motion was seconded by secretary Nordic. Yeah, so it was supposed to be Nord Hook.
And then final one is the motions made by secretary Nordic with the following changes, I believe that Andrea, that's right, Andrea, Danielle also agreed to update the map to reflect rural residential to match the text, the map is showing a rural preservation.
I think that goes under number two, revert to the version of the future land use map approved a few months ago, because I thought that it said that in that map, but I could be wrong.
I think the map that you're referring to is the one that we approved and sent to the board, and that's long before we started re, renaming, renaming districts, is that right?
I'm fine with that amendment, I, I, if I put that in the motion, I, I don't recall it, but I absolutely could have.
It's, it's in the, it's in the text above, but just to make that part.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes with the edits that he.
I'll support that.
Discussion.
Yeah, can we have a little discussion? Motion made by member Reese, supported by member Nordike.
Is there any reason that these edits couldn't have been done Friday? Because we're going to that format, we're not going to be doing it here like this anymore, no more.
Because I just read it, three thirty this afternoon.
Well, they're available Friday.
Do we drive on Friday? Thank you. And we will discuss that further at the end of the meeting. I'd just like to say, I think the meeting minutes from our last meeting are quite well done. Congratulations to Nick and Andrea, thanks. Your good job. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting minutes are approved, seven zero, thank you.
At seven oh seven.
Okay. It's good. Okay, I'd like to now acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. If it's an item that is not on the agenda, you can come forward and speak to us about your concern, we ask that you hold it to five minutes. And if you come up, please give us your name and your address.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order, article nine is not slated for a public hearing, so perhaps they want to talk about that as well.
It's actually article eight.
Article, all right, I have the old minutes. Case number twenty four, thirty eight, twenty seven is not slated for a public hearing, so you might amend your. So if they want to talk about that, they could.
If anybody wants to talk about case twenty four, thirty eight, twenty seven, Josh Baker on fifty four, forty one, thirty sixth street, you're eligible to talk about that. Anybody? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi.
First meeting, uh, been in the township.
Name and address.
Okay, John McGovern. My property address is fifty five oh five, thirty sixth street. I've been there for just under forty years. So the property with Joshua Baker is immediately adjacent to my property.
You're just east of his property?
Yes.
Okay, I was out there this afternoon.
Can you say the address one more time, I'm sorry? The address one more time?
Five five zero five, thirty sixth street. And I've only known about this meeting for four or five hours. So I'm really not had a lot of time to prepare, my attorney's out on vacation, so I'm a little bit edgy about this. But in any case, I do want to make a comment, I just had a chance to briefly scan the staff letter there, there's a staff or a sensor about easement, about me searching for an easement, and I didn't find any. What I was searching for was a deed at easement. I definitely have a prescriptive easement. I've been sharing that, that drive with multiple property owners over a really long time. And that's drives used to access my H, HVAC equipment, that I have a twenty four foot roof, that is the short access to the roof. I've got a generator over there, I've got two A C compressors, all of my heavy power coming into the building is accessed there, there's a big transformer there on the ground. To say this, this project got off to a rocky start is a incredible understatement. Um, I, there isn't enough time for me to get into everything that's happened. But I do want to let you know about the prescriptive easement. And also that the current property owner in the adjacent area has been notified in writing of, of my rights as a being a prescriptive easement months ago. The, I've had significant encroachment problems. Cranes on my property, I couldn't get it off, there's a property stake marked property line, put twenty feet over the property line, and I stood there with the Kent County Sheriff. And he said, I can't do anything, but just, and I had to tell him, this isn't the property line. So it took several times over to the neighbor to try to get him to move equipment, move move materials off the line. I just had, it's just been a really big distraction for me. And understand there's another drawing is being considered today. I don't know how this wall gets built without trespassing on my property. I had to call the surveyors back out because the sheriff said he couldn't do anything, and I had to have my property resurveyed again and stakes put in, right now, today, there's a stake, you can see it from the road, property line, and this dirt ramp that goes up, it's encroached over the line. I didn't become aware of these three easements that were submitted with the original plan until, until earth started to get moved, a lot of earth get moved onto my property. That's when I went down to the township, and they said there was three easements attached to the original submission. I had never was never aware of those, they weren't signed by me. I am skeptical that this new plan with this wall. First off, the current owner has rights to my side over the property line, I have rights to his side under the easement. Um, if this wall goes in, I have a much narrower drive. Commercial equipment can't come in there and turn around anymore. It now becomes a one-way drive.
It's a dead end.
Dead end, not very safe. I mean, the previous owners, we chew on before that, and before that, it was just a non, non-issue. A couple other side comments, my warehouse floor is four feet below the grade. So it's a berm building. And the floor where all my heavy power is coming into the building is, is low. If these plans, and I'm not a geologist, but if these plans somehow fall short on drainage, it could knock me out, shut me down. And again, I'm not a geologist, so I don't, I don't, I'm not able to evaluate that. But I, I just want to state, you know, this would be similar to me with a previous owner of that property coming and just tearing up my half of the drive and, and putting sod in. It would be to that owner would make that unusable. Because you have half of a drive. But, you know, I've never been before the, the township in all these years, but of course, this is affecting me pretty directly. So unfortunately, you know, this design got approved to move forward, now there's concrete foundations poured and there's steel raised. But there was a ton of other options to bring access to that building besides building a ramp on the side of the building and put it, put a several feet high wall adjacent to my property. I'm just really disappointed to be here right now, I'm sure you guys don't want to deal with this right now, but you know, I'm living that reality.
Member Nordike. Mr. Chair, if I could ask Mr. McGovern a question?
Yes.
Mr. McGovern, I actually have two questions, I want to, I want to substantiate what you just said, so are you indicating that they've already started work on this project?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that, and from your opinion as a neighbor, what would you like to see done differently to accommodate the easement that you mentioned?
Well, that's just it, I mean, this floor elevation, seven feet higher than the current grade. A choice was made that kind of made that the outcome. This, this side drive could come around the back of the building without raising a lot of grade on the side and have a rear entrance, which is very traditional or warehouse type access. For some reason, it's important to the owner to have this be similar to a drive-through. What purpose, I don't know, but the, the natural incline of the, the terrain drains down, as it says in this report that I saw, northeast. And I, this is a, a pickle here, because this, this foundation's been poured, the steel went up after the planner told them to stop.
So the steel is up as well, Mr. McGovern?
It was erected hastily after they were told to stop.
Interesting, thank you for that.
I have a couple of questions too.
Just a minute, member Reese.
I just want to point a clarification. Is it, is it fair to say that my, my understanding is there's a easement that he has over part of your property, and then the driveway is kind of in the middle.
It's a shared drive.
Right, so you have kind of rights a few ways to her side or his side?
Yeah, both sides.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's just so.
All right, but because he's building a wall on the lot line, it, it renders his side useless to you. Am I fair in saying that?
That, that would be
I mean, unless you've got some.
Not only useless to me, but also the side that's left loses on, on, on the fall of its functionality.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, two little question.
Hold on.
Yeah, how long have you been dealing with this? Just approximate, six months, eight months, a year?
An easy six months.
Okay. And then how, you said that there's some of the dirt is, the dirt entrance is encroaching on your side, your property line, about how much? Are we talking a foot or two, are we talking six feet?
Um, it, it's only one or two feet now. It was several feet, so I mean, the stakes there, if you draw by, you'd see the stake of the property line. And.
Thank you.
Yes, member Bruno.
Again, point of clarification, so prescriptive, prescriptive easement is essentially adverse possession, so I think I get that. But I'm still a little confused on the, is there an actual recorded easement, or is that what we're searching for?
That's what the comments were, I, I told Andrea that we were searching, actually plat records, because this went back to foremost when they developed the area. And, and I've been there since it's been two, Tulian Road, but I was looking for deeds in the plat records. So I, I didn't find any there, and I shared that, but the way it's written is kind of definitive, there is no easement, there actually is an easement, it's just not a deed at easement.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we hold off until we get to article nine and get more detail on this from Andrea. And more history on that, and invite you back up to talk further and answer more questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Mr. McGovern.
Sure.
Thank you so much for coming in. Any other issues that people would like to come forward and speak about, general nature? Anybody online, Nick? Thank you, okay, I'd like to now move forward to article eight, I don't know what happened to seven, it disappeared somewhere. Uh, article eight, case number twenty four, thirty eight, forty two, Train Technologies, Mr. Gearlings. Uh, Andrea, would you like to come up and give us a little background?
Sure, if you don't mind, I'm going to stay right here, so I have my computer, unfortunately, we don't have monitors, I'm sorry. Uh, the packet is available online on our website, so if anybody in, in the audience or anybody online would like to see kind of what's going on, you can go to cascade T W P dot com and then go to boards and commissions, planning commission, and the packet will be available there. Sorry that we don't have it available. Just to be in front of you, so the applicant is requesting a this applicant has been a hundred and twenty eight thousand square foot building located at fifty eight, twenty four. I'm not going to go into full detail and, and review everything that's in the packet that I've previously provided, but today, the planning commission will be looking at, this will be a site plan review, plus a special land use for outdoor storage on the southwest portion of the property. Outdoor storage is a, a special land use per section seventeen one I of our zoning ordinance, and you'll see that there's a chart within your packet that addresses the standards for approving a special land use for outdoor storage. And then staff's findings and recommendation for approving that, staff does recommend approving outdoor storage for this location. I do want to note one thing, this is, this is completely the planning commission's prerogative, but there's two sections in our ordinance that handle outdoor storage. One of them, like I mentioned, is the special land use chapter and chapter seventeen, and the second, the second section is section twenty, which is the landscape section. Within our ordinance, we do require that outdoor storage, so this would be section twenty point one three, page six of your staff review, we do have requirements for outdoor storage. One of them is an eight-foot fence around the outdoor storage. Personally, that was kind of surprising, I understand for you know, maybe junk yards or, or other places, this isn't something that we have the ability to waive. This is something that is required by our ordinance to have an eight-foot outdoor fence for outdoor storage. So the applicant, after I showed them this section, did provide that. Uh, but I would want to know and have at least some feedback from the planning commission on their thoughts towards, if, if we move towards amending our zoning ordinance, they build this into the fall, they get their rough-in, and they're, and they're working on interior throughout the winter, and by this next spring, after we've adopted zoning ordinance amendments, if that is amended per the planning commission's recommendation, it may be appropriate for them to come back and ask for just a six-foot fence. Right now, it, the eight-foot fence is there, but if they chose to change that in the spring, it would be a six-foot fence, so I just want to disclose that, I've explained that. It would be a six-foot fence if we adopted that, I just want to disclose that, get some feedback, we're not doing anything right now, but it's at least in here for review. Other issues that I would like the planning commission to consider, that the ordinance gives the planning commission to consider would be the second drive off of craft, if you look at the site, the previous driveway that is constructed on the subject parcel is an access drive to the parcel just to the north, I'm going to get the number wrong, which would be fifty seven, eighty four, this came before the planning commission in twenty twenty three, and you approved an expansion to the existing building at fifty seven, eighty four, with a driveway accessed through the subject parcel that we're, we're looking at a site plan review for today. They would like to add an additional drive to the south side of the subject parcel, they've purchased the small residential parcel, they're going to combine those two parcels, and then they'd like to loop that driveway around, so they have the north driveway to access the north building, plus it would curve around to the south, access the south building, and then trucks could leave through the southern driveway. Um, but because they're both on the same parcel, it's the planning commission's purview to approve that or not, so we have to clarify that tonight, obviously not doing it would impact their site tra- dramatically.
How far apart are the two drives?
So that's another thing that's mentioned in your staff report.
Sixty seven feet.
Yeah, two hundred and sixty seven feet, it should be three hundred, but the zoning ordinance also allows for a reduction in the distance between those two driveways. The applicant has applied for a variance, and that is also included in your staff report that the applicant would then need to go for a variance.
Through the Z V, C B A.
And that would be a condition of approval for this site plan. We find that that's appropriate, given that the parcel to the north is likely not going to have another access drive, or there is a there is a parcel fronting craft that would potentially want another driveway, so that is a consideration. We're not going to see massive development there, I don't see this being a massive problem, but it is the planning commission's
Say that again, there's another, say that last, there's another parcel?
Yep, I wish I had a map, so if you look at.
Is it, is it the same?
Point of clarification, page thirty eight, I think it shows it very clearly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yes, there is the parcel fifty seven, how come I can't click on it? Oh, it's just.
Page thirty eight of the.
It's a picture.
Page thirty eight of the PDF.
Okay, so you can see that we have the subject parcel, then the parcel to the north, which is also owned by Train, fifty seven, eighty four.
Yeah.
And then west of that, fronting craft, there is another driveway. I don't, we could, I could probably quickly measure it, go ahead.
Member Reese. Did, did you ask the applicant about the possibility of having that aligned with the drive across the street? I guess that's the next parcel down, they probably won't have control of that, right?
Well, yes, that is obviously a good practice, but you can see that the design of their driveway on the north side is intentionally designed to preserve low area in the current retention pond that you approved with the previous site at fifty seven, eighty four. So yes, it would be ideal, but one, it would put the driveways closer together, and they wouldn't meet the twenty-five foot.
No, it would actually put them further apart, it'd be like five hundred and sixty feet apart.
They don't, they don't own that property.
Okay.
That's the parcel to the south. So that's not possible.
All right.
So getting back to the things that the planning commission needs to handle, and this hearing is then also, which we've seen a lot lately, lately, is the buffer yard C requirements. Um, we've put a chart in the staff review that shows the requirements based on the zoning ordinance than what the applicant has provided. So the applicant has met the requirements of the east and south side. The applicant has not met the requirements of the west and north side. I'm going to speak first to the west side, if you see on your plan, the, the required buffer yard plant material is supposed to be within that twenty-foot buffer. The applicant has provided new plantings in the, on the west side of the parcel, but then also you can see where they're proposing outdoor storage. They have provided ample additional landscaping outside of the outdoors, or on the west side of the outdoor storage. If you calculated the plant material that has been provided on this site plan, as if it were in the buffer yard, they would be, they would meet their requirements, they would actually exceed their requirements for planting on the west buffer. Um, then the other one that they are asking for, a a decrease in plant material on is the north buffer, they have indicated that because this site is integrated into the site to the north, that that plant material wouldn't be appropriate, and I've agreed, one thing I did kind of in the last review of this, I looked at the northwest side of the property line where the access easement comes in to the existing building. There's possibility that we could provide a little bit more plant material there, I think, without problems. But either way, I'm comfortable with the plant material that the applicant has provided, and it's within the planning commission's purview to either waive that or to require at least a little more, or as the staff report says, you can also deny and require that they have it all, it's, those are all your choices. I recommend the site as approved, or maybe a little bit additional plant material on the north side of the existing drive.
Any questions for Andrea? Member Bruno.
Also in your report, it mentions that the, this new drive is only, I'm sorry, that's right. This storage area is only forty-one feet from the south property line, when we normally require fifty, it looks like it could be moved easily, has that been discussed?
So I, I noticed that at the end, I think that the solution that I would propose there, because it's, we need another nine feet, is that the applicant has provided some deferred parking in your last page of the staff review, there's some deferred parking requirements, but this is where we run into this really weird thing where we say all of your outdoor storage has to be screened. Which makes it really hard to kind of sneak any parking in there, I think the best way to, to remedy the fact that the outdoor storage isn't meeting the fifty-foot requirement may be to just require parking or instead of putting the deferred parking to the east side of your parking area, is to require parking off of the drive, that would then have to be eighteen feet because our requirements for parking, or you could do them angled, because we require nine by eighteen, if they did angled parking there, you would get away with that additional eight or nine feet that we need to add for that outdoor storage to be compliant.
Now, the screening wall would continue around along, alongside the drive?
This is, yeah, this is. This is, yeah, this is. Yeah, this is the hard thing with the design and what I'm talking about is we require this. We're in this situation. I don't, we, we kind of discussed this. I don't see a bunch of like kids coming and like jumping around and hurting themselves on this material. I, I don't know that.
She has seen the teenagers of Cascade.
I know.
And I could speak from experience.
In the existing site, the applicant could speak to this, but they, they're probably sick of me saying this, but they have non-compliant, compliant. Outdoor storage that they're putting this in to comply with. I don't think that they've ever had any problems with people climbing around on. Uh, on industrial. Yeah, again, this is what our ordinance says right now. It would not be out of the question to require it right now. Bring this back, you know, have the applicant, when they're ready to do their site work in the spring. Come back for a modification to the site plan and require, you know, those modifications either come back to the planning commission. Or the planning commission makes some determinations on how they'd feel about this from an administrative staff review process. I'm trying to dot my i's and cross my t's, but this requirement seems somewhat inappropriate.
Also, so a couple more, I wasn't going to go out of order, but since you're on that, but that's for storage in general. Some people like. If you continue reading this, it talks about storing vehicles like a van, if it's got ladders on top of it. So if we, are we going to change the six, are you, are you proposing where it changes six foot for storage for everyone or just for them? Because I could see a lot of things requiring an eight foot fence to block it from view.
So I would say that. The need to block industrial. Operations from industrial operations is maybe not necessary. What I would say is if we're going to require an eight foot, foot fence. For such use that we would do it in adjacent, in properties, a budding residential or something like that. We don't have a lot of industrial areas within Cascade Township. We've kind of got it nicely tucked behind the airport, so there's not a lot of residential parcels that are negatively impacted by industrial uses. I think of, I live off, uh, you know, I live in Grand Haven. I drive M one oh four. We have a, a junkyard directly facing this main drive that people drive by all the time. You know, an eight foot fence there to kind of screen that junk is appropriate. An eight foot fence to screen. You know, from the other industrial property to the north or south, you know. I think that they're not going to be negatively impacted or offended by looking at industrial material in an industrial zone district. That's my thought.
What is, and I'm sorry, I don't know this answer. What is their, like you mentioned their current five thousand and five corporate exchange? Is that industrial? Is that transitioned? Cause that's an eyesore. I don't know if you're driven by that, but that.
Yeah, that's, they've heard me over, that's why they're doing that. They've heard me. We've kind of joked about how many times they have to listen to me mention the outdoor storage at five hundred. Or five thousand and five.
Why the difference? Why, if it's unsightly there.
That is.
Different district?
So if you remember, we heard fifty eighty-five corporate exchange when I first started. That was all in the PUD. I want to say fifty. I believe it's PUD fifty. I think it's the Meadowbrook PUD. So it's regulated by Meadowbrook.
Okay, thank you.
PUD.
Thank you.
But there's a lot of things again there that when we were trying to hold them to their standards, there's a lot of things there that are just historically non-compliant. And as applications come up like this, we'll request that the applicant come into compliance.
Any other questions for Andrea?
One last one, if I may. You say in here that, uh. They're going to submit the, uh. Minimum park requirements, the applicants wear this requirement and they will submit to the township, um, before they come to the planning commission. Has that been?
So it wasn't minimum parking requirements. It would be, I assume I. Reference this in parking requirements and I referenced it again in the engineering report. This would be the shared parking agreement and the revised storm water maintenance agreement, which I have not received yet. Um, which is, you know, kind of something that is not, it's by no means necessary for this approval. Something that we can work with the, the applicant on. They knew that it needed to be done. I would recommend adding that as number seven to your conditions.
Member Richardson.
Um, just a comment, I mean, I personally, um. I kindly disagree with what you say about industrial, like there are examples of. Industrial buildings, for example, I have some friends that work at Magna. And they purposely create like a beautiful environment for their customers to come into. And I don't think that they would want to see. Kind of like a junkyard filled with giant air conditioning units right next to their building. So when you say, you know, industrial might not need to block a view of industrial storage. Some people do think that, um, they would not want to see that.
And that's why I made sure to mention it to the planning commission. I want to make sure that it's, it's your decision.
I would concur with member Richardson on that. Uh, member Reese.
Perhaps it's the snowplower side of me, but I'm noticing. I don't see anywhere on these plans for dumpster corrals for either of these buildings.
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to use the dumpster on the. This is something that I addressed as well. So there is a dumpster at fifty-seven eighty-four. And I asked the same thing and they're proposing to use that dumpster. So we would want that if the planning commission finds that that's an appropriate. Uh, use there, that they would include that in their parking, um, agreement with. The parcel to the north.
Okay, so should that be on the site plan then, where that corral would be placed?
Yep. All of the applicants, it may be.
Listed, that listed in the packet as one of the.
It's not an item that needs to be, that is addressed in, um, the condition, but we can add it. I would recommend adding it and saying, provide a shared parking agreement, including access to the. Dumpster enclosure on. Five, seven, eight, four. I think I'm saying the address right. Yeah, craft. Drive and the revised storm water maintenance agreement.
Other questions for Andrea? Member Bruno.
Maybe one, I'm not sure if it's for you, but I'll, I'll throw it out there. It looks like some of their deferred parking. Um, actually the fifty-one spaces is currently where there's loading bays for the existing, I think, tire center. So how, how is that? Deferred parking if currently semi is loading unloaded, there's loading bays there.
Correct. So you'll know that this is, they're, they're going to. That tire company is leaving and the entire, um. What I've said is like a campus will be run by train. So train will have, um, additional office area. In the north building. They won't be utilizing that bay. They'll be utilizing the bays that are at the, the proposed building on the west side. Two other things. There is a new photometric. I'm sure you guys don't care, but I'm putting it on the record. They provided a photometric that is, that one is, is close to compliant, but it needed a couple tweaks. I received it like a couple hours after I handed in the packet. I didn't think you guys would care that much. If you want the photometric plan that shows the exact compliance for foot handles, I will provide it. And two, there's one other thing I wanted to note. No, that's it.
I don't need it. Somebody else need it. Member Reese.
If they're using the north building then for more office, do we have to recalculate the parking for that building? Or has that already been?
It's calculated into the, the calculation that I provided you.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'd like to now call the owner's representative, Mr. Gerlings up.
Scott is here. I'm Jack with Nederbald. I'll start us out and he can finish this up.
Okay.
We've been working with staff with your township engineer and with Andrea to get the plan in order here. We've worked with the road commission. They've approved that two hundred and sixty-seven foot dimension. We're into them right now for a permit for that second drive. That second drive is really important for trains. That gives them. Truck access back in there and give them access to their outdoor storage area. Um, one thing in the outdoor storage area to note, um, just want to make sure you understood this isn't. Um, train like small air conditioning units and like we're going to have. Uh, swap one out at somebody's house and then throw the other one in the yard and.
These aren't residential units.
Right, these are huge units that are, you know, rooftop units and whatnot, and that outdoor storage area is intended to. Stage the finished unit before it gets shipped to a construction site. So either finished new products, um. But understand the comment, appreciate the comment if.
So roughly, how tall are these things?
I can't answer that, but train probably can.
Fifty-three feet long by probably twelve feet wide.
Oh.
So any particular reason why that storage area can't be moved in ten feet? So we hit the fifty foot.
We can accommodate somehow, either by moving it or creating. A space, right now we're showing the fence kind of right at the edge of the access road. Which you might be desirable to move that fence back a little bit. So if fifty foot is where you end up, we can accommodate that somehow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and then just from way of history, um, Scott and I have been working on this site since two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen-ish. Um, he bought the property, developed the north building originally with the national, uh, tire warehouse building. And then added on, which is what train is in now, but the tire warehouse is going to be leaving. They're taking over the whole site. So it'll be a one operation controlling everything out there. So, um, we've relied on them. To kind of inform us of how they're going to function on the site. The dumpster enclosure, just want to address that too. It's a double dumpster enclosure. It is shown on the existing conditions. Plan on sheet C two oh one, it's, um, kind of where, where national tires. Loading docks are, it's kind of due south of there. It's a double. It's labeled on the existing conditions plan as dumpster area. But that's a double enclosure, so they think that with that one, they'll have plenty of space for what they're going to be using.
You said that on C two oh one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you find it?
I did not.
Can I approach and just point it out for you?
Uh, I'd like your word, word. Well, yeah, sure.
I wouldn't do that. You bring the whole system down.
Don't touch anything.
Don't do that.
Was it page forty?
You're wrong, so you could say E six, right?
Thirty-nine, page thirty-nine.
Page thirty-nine. Where, where would it be on there?
It's on the north.
Oh, I see the dumpster area. I spotted it right in that corner. Okay, got it. Thank you.
We're happy to answer any questions you'd be having.
What did you say, Scott? I'm, I'm lost.
Right in the middle, right, right in the middle.
Right here.
Right there, if you zoom in, it says dumpster area. It says it's there, I believe.
Yeah.
Just this way a little bit.
Dumpster area.
And puts a blue pointer.
It's a master enclosure, double, double dumpster in there, so.
It's broken again. Okay, any questions for Jack? Okay, Mr.
Member Bruno, um. I have really no expertise in this, so it's, it's a, it's a bit of a aloof question, but. Um, with all of our PFOS and contamination issues with liquids, um, obviously chillers use refrigerants. We know there's a new transition from, I believe, like R one thirty-four A to things like R four forty-four, fifty-four B and R thirty-two. Is that going to be on site? Is that something pollution, something we should be concerned about? I have no idea how that's regulated.
Talking German to me.
It's practically German to me, so I'm, I'm actually reading off the screen. I just.
I'm not the expert in the refrigerants, but we're, um, one thirty-four A is leaving, we'll no longer use. And then we'll go to five thirteen, five fifteen A, which is a lower flash point, et cetera. So.
Okay.
Um, and it's very, it's just really for us, it's testing. It's not a full charge and then we don't ship them charged, so.
Okay, so you just test.
And we have to fill it, test it, make sure there's no leaks and send it out.
Can you give us your name?
I'm sorry, Chris Oil Train Technologies.
So will you have giant storage containers of this or like?
Uh, we have, we have a tank. We'll have an outside bulk, bulk tank, but you also have gas, gas tanks for brazing, et cetera, that we do for copper.
But you'll charge the system and then evacuate the system. So it's kind of a closed loop. You're not.
Exactly. Nope, just enough to charge it and move on.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Chris?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a note, this will require public comment, or a public hearing for the special land use for the.
Uh, is Mr. Gerlings here? Come on up. Tell us about development of all this.
Well, uh, one, one thing to address that site on the, uh. Scott Gerlings, um, we're here for fifty-seven eighty-four and fifty-eight twenty-four.
Um, okay.
Is the, the first site to the left as you drive in the new drive, it would be on the, um. That'd be northwest part of this property. That, that is owned by Irwin Quarter, who's a, a German injection molding company. I mean, their plan, we've got plans to use that site for them. They would be accessing off of the drive that comes in. They wouldn't be accessing off of Craft Avenue. If that helps you with the other decisions. Just want to let you know that.
Okay, no more curb cuts.
Right, right. Yeah. They're part of our road easement and the retention and everything. It's a shared deal for the whole site, so.
Okay, good. The, uh, detention pond that we have there, is that, uh, going to be dry most of the time?
It has been. I guess that would be more Jack than myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, is designed to be a drain dry detention.
Good, good.
Drain within forty-eight hours.
We don't want ducks living in there.
No, it's, it's, it's bone dry right now. Yeah.
The airport actually requires it to be that way.
Cause of planes. Yeah, we don't need wild birds around.
Right, right, right.
Okay, questions for Mr. Gerlings? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say to make a motion about going to public hearings.
Okay, motion by Mr. Reese, supported by Mr. Nordike. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We are now in public hearing. Anybody online?
Make a motion that we leave public hearing?
Support. Motion by member Nordikes, ordered by member Reese. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, discussion among, uh, planning commission members.
Uh, a couple comments.
Yes, Mr. Rullen. So I would be willing to support this with the driveway at two hundred and sixty-seven feet. The planning based on the plants, based on Andrea's recommendation being okay. But I think they should add the fifty-one spaces once that. Uh, existing company moves out. And, um, I think they should move the storage area from forty feet from the property line, fifty feet from the prop. Coincide with.
I think I'd be supportive of that as well, because it's already paved. It's a loading dock, so I, I, I don't want to create parking that's not already there, but it's already paved. Might as well stripe it and have the spaces and keep the others, um, truly deferred. That would make some sense to me. I'd support your idea.
Chris, Scott, I mean, you guys are shaking your heads, anything?
I support what you just suggested.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Think you should draft them all.
I, I just need some clarification on a few items. Uh, so you, you guys are talking about the fifty-one spaces. That's great. And you're going to move the storage yard to the fifty foot mark. I can get behind that. There's some talk about the photometrics plan. If somebody drafts a motion, do we need to include language for that on top of the recommendations that are in the packet? Because I think you said you just got a revised plan.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to just say, you know, approved with the photometric plans. Submitted after the application packet went out, something simple. That's something that can be administratively changed and would be.
Okay, but you want us to. Basically, my previous question, you want us to actually say, um. They shouldn't file updated storm water maintenance.
Yeah.
Um, access easements and shared parking. So you want us to add that to your list, you said, correct?
Yep.
Okay. We're going back to.
Shared parking agreement and storm water maintenance.
And, um. Access easement is what you've got listed in that paragraph, three things.
Member Richardson.
I know we're talking about a different address here, but if you quickly glance at the aerial view of. Five zero zero five corporate exchange and just look at the parking lot filled with. Dozens of these air conditioning units. That's what each of their locations is going to begin to look like, or this is going to take care of that.
I'm sorry, my address.
So one of, I just moved here, just so you guys know, and, uh, I'm now over all those three facilities. We have four facilities, actually, if we build this building. Um, I will tell you by the end of this month, we will have most of those units, actually two separate, um. Kind of businesses, if you would, is the production facility would be where we're, the craft building is actually a production line. Kind of businesses, if you would, is the production facility would be where we're, the craft building is actually a production line mass production. We're making ten units a day type of activities. Craft, I mean, we're corporate boulevard exists today is actually, it's a specialty business that's grown over the years. Hence, our CSO office, which is our customer sales office, has moved across the street, because we've grown outside, outgrown that building. Um, what we're doing today is we have an action plan to do, and we're, all the cars that are parked on the street will be. My goal is by the end of this month, we'll now be in the parking lot, so we'll be reducing that footprint of all the stuff you see outside. There still has to be some units. What we do is, that's called a final finisher unit, we have highly engineered, customized. Um, customer wants a blue crazy, whatever, we design it and we do it, and that's we modify something that we make at another facility. So our current strategy today is to reduce all that stuff that's outside. Um, we get that's an eyesore. Andrea's reminded me, and every time we have a communication, hey, Chris, by the way, what are you doing about five oh corporate? She's always very nice about it. So we are addressing that, we understand the need and eyesore. Um, we will, all the cars that are parked on the road today, our goal is to get those on for the parking lots that we have, we lease one across the street. And everything that's in there today.
Emma Bruno.
I'm hearing shrinking, is there any possibility, since you are one train, like, could you? Store them in this fenced area and slightly increase the footprint of this?
Um, we can do some of those, um. It, it, it gets really, really complicated. We have an offsite storage that, that we're moving a lot of these units to. And we'll cycle through, but we're gonna shrink the footprint of what sits there.
Well, so that begs the question, if they're using outside storage, shouldn't there be a fence around those as well?
That's kind of like.
Point of order, though, corporate exchange is not in front of us.
With that?
Craft buildings, it's in front of us. I think we have to stick to the building that's in front of us.
This.
We, we are addressing it, and we acknowledge that there's a lot of items and units outside, and we're addressing that, and. Hopefully, when you come in August, you'll see a dramatic difference in what that looks like today.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Does anybody have any thoughts about, one thing I didn't mention in my. The size of the fence, I mean, I'm kind of inclined to keep it at eight feet, but I don't. Or at least eight feet on the, the, the portion facing Craft Avenue.
It's industrial, I support it as.
Eight feet all the way around?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of what I thought.
I see no reason to bend from what the ordinance states.
Yeah.
You making a motion, Emma?
Number Rowland.
Gotta go, I gotta go all the way.
Please, give us a motion.
Yeah, I thought he was in the middle of a motion.
It's at the bottom of page twenty three.
All right, I'll make a motion for case number twenty fourth, thirty eight forty two, um. A motion to. Allow the current planting the way it is. Um, add the additional fifty one spaces on the north property. Uh, leave the driveway at two hundred and sixty seven feet from the second driveway. Move the outside enclosed storage area from forty feet off the property line to fifty feet off the property line. Keep the fence at eight feet around that outside storage area. And make sure that the applicant is compliant with the photometric, um, standards of the township.
Your motion is to approve with those.
Prove with those.
And revise, revise stormwater agreement?
And revise stormwater agreement.
And then are you including the, the nine points that she has on page seven?
Yeah, with staff recommendations.
I'll support it.
A motion by member Rowland, supported by member Nordike. Any further discussion?
For the member Bruno. I'm just afraid that. Lumping in staff recommendations conflicts, so we would have to scratch, and I think number three of staff recommendation, because we're letting them defer.
Which, which number three, because it's numbered one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six.
That's what, so the way that I got it, th- those are recommendation, those are conditions. You guys handled all the provisions. Okay, so that number three of the provisions I changed to, the deferred parking plan is acceptable. Uh, and the, uh, with the township requiring the fifty one spaces on fifty seven eighty four. And. Uh, a fifty foot buffer for the outdoor storage.
So the first three conditions, we already addressed.
Yes.
So we just have to work on the, on the second. Uh, on the one through six, conditions one through six are still.
Correct, and all, yeah, from what you just said, you just added. Uh, the applicant, uh, the applicant provide the shared parking agreement. And revise stormwater agreement with the dumpster enclosure.
Okay, any further discussion points?
On, and the. So I'm using your own words here, I keep forgetting it.
Yeah.
The. Access easement, that's the final one, I don't think you have captured, you have it earlier.
The access easement exists. The storm. The access easement is in place, and it was in place from the fifty seven eighty four approval.
I thought you said it should be updated, it says exists, however, these documents should be updated to reflect changes in the design.
The stormwater maintenance agreement.
Very good.
Okay, motion on the floor by member Rowland, supported by member Nordike. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, we'll be in touch.
Okay.
And please tell me what you do to get Andrea, it'd be nice to you, Christian, not nice to her.
They're nice to me. They cooperate, they listen, they do what I say.
What's that? What'd you say?
She's nice to me.
You guys should just go.
Thank you, guys. We'll, we'll be in touch in the next couple days.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, article nine, case twenty four thirty eight twenty seven, Josh Baker. Um. Andrea, would you like to give us a little background on this?
Yes, I, I do feel that considering, um, the, the neighbor and the applicant's, uh, comments, I do want to kind of break down. Um, the history, and I probably should have done this a little clearer in staff review. I did write down in the history that there was a site plan that was approved on October five during the November twenty twenty three hearing. Um, and that actually, I was incorrect, it was December four that this came to the planning commission for approval. It was kind of that in-between period, um, the, the site plan was approved with, uh. Temporary grading easement for the property located at. Five, five zero five thirty sixth street. Um, but. In, uh, I want to say. It was right around the end of March, Mister McGovern, who spoke in public comment, came in. Um, you know, just kind of confused on why the neighbor was doing work within his property. Um, so I listened to Mister McGovern, looked at the site plan review. Um, agreed that this didn't exist, so I, we reached out, the staff, uh, the department reached out. To the property owners and the builder on three twenty nine with a, with a compliance letter, just asking, hey, it looks like the neighbor. This was your approval, you submitted a, an easement, a temporary, uh, grading easement in your application. The case number was twenty three seven, uh, three seven nine five, um, on December. Four, if the planning commissioners would like to review any of the documents that were submitted there. So it's heard, I went back and listened to, to it, it didn't exist, the applicant did reach back out and say. No, we never got that, there was some confusion, it doesn't really matter why, or why, why not, it, it didn't happen, so therefore. It was determined per ordinance that their applicant wasn't. Um, or their application wasn't complete, because they submitted a grading easement that didn't exist, which meant. That their application, their site plan review was then revoked. Um, so the applicant then submitted, um, actually. I might as well go explain everything. The compliance letter went out on three twenty nine, uh, the cease and desist.
Doing work during this time?
Uh, yes, yeah, so the cease and.
Going to clarify.
Yep, so after, immediately when I found out that their application wasn't. That their, their site plan wasn't valid, I sent a cease and desist letter on four two, um. Just saying, this, this work needs to stop, you don't have an approved site plan, this is how this works, you need to apply for a new site plan, um. Unfortunately, I think that the builder that's no longer with them, and, and I'll let the applicant, oh. He's here, Mister Burry continued to do work, um, I want to drop this, the. Cease and desist letter off right on the door, did everything per ordinance, um. Mister Burry continued to do work, so they had con, they had, um, they had their iron, uh, their. Was that what it was? Their metalwork.
Steel.
Their steel was sitting on the ground when I dropped off the cease and desist. Over the weekend, the entire building got erected, so now you can see the whole entire steel frame is. Uh, is up, so then I, um, immediately issued a citation, um, and then that is when. Um, the, the engineer and the architect kind of took over. As the forward face to the planning or to the department. We went back and forth multiple times, just trying to get this compliance, so what I'm bringing to you now, you know, is in compliance, um. Commissioner Norda, Nord, Nordike, it seems like you had a question, did?
I did, so you said that you cited them, Andrea?
Yes.
How much did you cite them for?
Well, we didn't cite them for anything yet, because that's still, um, going to end up going to court. Um, and that's, that's still pending, we don't have a court set yet, like to kind of see how this plays out, and that's still.
Did we pull the builder's, uh, license?
Um, did we pull their license from the building department?
Yeah.
The building department is very aware, I don't know that we pulled the license, I don't think that Mister Burry is doing any other work in the township right now. Um, but the building department, the Kent County, um. Sheriff's Office, everyone was very clear in what's going on with this, and the work then did stop.
Um, finally.
Yes.
After it was done, it stopped.
Yeah.
After it was built.
Yeah, just checking.
Yeah, so it, it was not an ideal situation, Mister McGovern is right, I've been sharing these plans with Mister McGovern as they come in. Um, just so that he's in the know. Mister McGovern's had the plans that are in front of you. For a couple weeks now, since before the packet came out, just so that he can review it. Um, that easement doesn't exist, I would love to see that that easement did, so that we would have more teeth, but this. You know, as proposed, is a compliant site plan outside of the, um. The provision for the landscaping buffer that needs to be waived from the planning commission.
The retaining wall sets back ten feet off the property line?
So the retaining wall doesn't have to sit ten feet, there's no regulation for that, I believe that it's seven, not having the plans right in front of me. Um, I think it's seven feet. Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
May I ask a question of staff?
Emma Nordike.
Two questions. Um, did Eric look at Andrea, the, uh, what Mister McGovern said about the. The, the, the difference between the, the seven foot, I think is what it was, from, from grade versus where he's below grade. Is there any concern with washout that he, Eric saw, or anything like that?
No, so this has all been reviewed by the township engineer, as it, there was a number of items that. I think there was a couple different reviews, I believe that the first plan went to, actually, maybe the compliant plan. I don't know exactly the dates, but I think that they provided a compliant, um, stormwater maintenance plan on May eight, but we were waiting on. The geotechnical reports, which in your staff review, it says, I, sorry if this wasn't clear. I didn't mean that they should, as in, they have to have this, this can't be heard by the planning commission. They had submitted geotechnical reports, I had given them to Eric, I did not have. His confirmation that it was compliant when I sent out the staff review. Since then, this morning, Eric sent me an email saying that their geotechnical. Report is compliant, and that all elements of the site plan meet the stormwater ordinance, and that he requires, or that he, he, um, recommends approval.
And then, so. Follow on question, Mister Chair.
Yes.
If, Andrea, if we choose not to approve this, will the builder have to take the entire thing down?
If, that's a very, very likely situation, yeah, if this site isn't approved, this. This will not be fun for the, the builder.
They'd have to take down the structure.
They'd have to return it to its state before it was approved, is that correct?
Correct. Yep. And I, Leslie is on the phone, because this isn't going to get fun, if, you know, if, if you want Leslie to pipe in and kind of explain the process.
If that's possible, Mister Chair, I'd love to hear from Leslie and what our.
Just so I get number Bruno.
Addresses, so back, back to the, I'm not a lawyer, um, but. Recently, I actually had a situation similar with adverse possession, which is the prescriptive, um, um, easement. Do we know, has he filed anything with the courts? Is, is this.
Yeah.
Tied up currently, um.
No, I, um, in my last conversations, obviously Mister McGovern is here, it's not a, you know, we're not, this isn't a public hearing right now, and I think that I could speak. Um, for him, that he has worked with an attorney that, um. You know, if approved, he may be seeking legal, um. Ramifications for some, some of what has happened, but that would be a civil issue. But absent of a, an easement. I don't know that the township can.
Okay.
You, you, like, that, that should be a major factor. Mister McGovern does have a second driveway that he can access his property from. It may be possible, um, to provide, you know, that this retaining wall start a little bit further back. If you look on your site plan, I can look at what page it is.
Yeah, I guess my question was. You asked him to find an easement, he says either one exists, and it sounds like he might be able to create one, and I'm just wondering, do we have to give him time for that? Or is the time expired? I was just kind of wondering how that. If he doesn't have one to produce today, then therefore doesn't exist, is kind of what you're saying.
Yes, the township is not going to, you know, apart from that being provided, is not going to. You know, go into title work and, and all of this, the deep restrictions.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Andrea?
Would you want to know?
Could I ask a question of legal counsel, would it, do you want me to do it later?
Let's do it now.
Okay, Leslie, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Anne, thank you so much for joining us, uh, my.
Absolutely.
This is Nordike, my question is, if, if we, uh, make a determination not to approve this, under what, like. Can you walk us through what, if we decided to do that, or what, what circumstances could we reject this application?
Yeah, so if the, to the, if the planning commission decides to deny the application, to the extent that the wall was built. Inconsistent with the zoning ordinance, I would typically recommend getting a court order before we, um, pursue any sort of injunctive. Or enforcement actions to actually require them to remove the infrastructure that is in violation. Um, I'm not sure where the township is at in terms of citation, I know, uh, Andrea mentioned that. There was a citation issue, we haven't been involved in that at this point yet. Uh, but that would be the next step, we would get involved in, um, filing a municipal civil infraction citation. Uh, for the violation, and we would ask for injunctive relief from the court, uh, to. Uh, ensure and may any violations of the zoning ordinance. Um, now, to your question related to whether or not the, the township can deny. The, uh, application and under what circumstances, obviously, the planning commission is, um, you know, required to consider. The standards set forth in the zoning ordinance for these types of requests. Um, but the planning commission could certainly consider, uh, the, or should, should not, um. I guess the better way of phrasing that is, should not. Take into account the fact that it was already built, or it currently is built. Um, as a basis or a factor in favor of, uh, granting it. So in other words, and this is something that I recommend a lot for my zoning board of appeals clients, when they are considering a variance request. Sometimes, um, an applicant for a variance, the variance is necessary in order to make a non-compliant condition compliant. Um, and typically, we would not recommend that a zoning board of appeals consider, uh, the fact that it would require. Removal of, uh, infrastructure, some sort of, uh, building elements to become compliant, um, in a, and a, as a. Factor for granting or considering granting the application, you need to treat the property as if it is, um, as if the. Uh. The. Item being applied for does not currently exist, so I wouldn't factor in, um, economic considerations. In the planning commission's determination of the application. So I would focus on the elements that are required of you, and that are set forth in the staff memo. Um, in relation to this project, does that answer your question?
It, it does to an extent, if I could ask a couple follow-ons, because it sounds like to me that that wouldn't be a reason to affirmatively. Approve it, but, you know, based on the builder's, uh, behavior or lack of behavior. Is that something that could be considered? And, and the reason I ask is we have a history in this township of, of builders. Misbehaving and causing, causing significant damage, right, both reputationally, and, yeah, physically. Um, is that? Is that something that can be considered in this matter?
Yes, I think it certainly could be something that could be considered. But with that said, I also would urge the planning commission to focus also on the factors set forth in the zoning ordinance for this and. There likely may be factors that the planning commission could determine were not met in light of. The, you know, procedural history of this particular application.
Perfect. Thank you. That answers my questions.
Any other questions for Leslie? Okay. Any other comments Andrea?
I, I just want to kind of build on what Leslie just said. So if the planning commission. Was looking for elements of this application that were not compliant, it is going to be that landscaping buffer. And, you know, it's hard. We'd have to go back and determine if, you know, the. They've, they've, they've worked pretty hard to. Address every single element of the zoning ordinance that wasn't compliant outside of the landscaping buffer. So that's why.
And the cease and desist order.
Right.
Right. Worked really hard after they got that.
Right. Yes. So, you know, the question is, is the building placement appropriate for where the drive is? There's potential that the building. You know, could be moved over to the east to accommodate the driveway without the massive. Retaining wall and. Driveway.
I just have questions on the grading. Are we sure that the stormwater is not going to flood out the neighbor?
That has all been approved by the engineer. He has looked at all of these plans.
Our engineer.
Yes. But yes, and that is included in your. Yes.
Yes. Would it be appropriate Andrea, if we are having concerns with that, given the light of Mr. McGovern's. Statements that we would table this until we talk to Eric or would you, if, would you want us to put conditions that we validate? I'm asking your guidance on this. If, if that's a.
Either.
What would be the appropriate response to that?
Either would be appropriate. If you wanted to table and talk to Eric about design elements of this site, that would be, that would continue to.
That be appropriate? I, I, I feel like we table often and I don't want to do that.
This is, this is unique. There's a building that sits on there that was approved, but not approved. You know, we're looking at a whole new site.
And in theory, that would give Mr. McGovern the time that he perhaps needs to research his.
Yes.
Baker.
Come on up, come on up. Give us your full name. Full name. James Vandenberg, okay.
Yes, the architectural designer. My fellow architect is back there. This has been. Quite a project and I'm trying to work through it. This started when Brian was on staff, you know, the previous planner. And we got through it and I got his comments. And we were addressing his comments and. Then he left and then I believe the zoning administrator did the meeting.
Madison.
I believe so. And it got approved with some conditions. Some of those conditions were. A grading easement, a ingress and egress easement, I believe. There is not one right now. That we know of, I got a title search. There is not one. Okay. But it has been a shared drive the whole time.
Property line runs right down.
Right down the middle of, yeah. So we, we, we had one on the first site plan approval. We had one written up. It was on the plan. And then part of the condition was, is that. If I remember correctly, that the owner next door had to have signed permission to agree with the easement. And I'm told we had that and then he ripped it up. So all this could have been averted. I mean, we, it would have been graded beautiful and everything with the easement and landscaped and so forth and so on. If he didn't revoke his signature. So then that gives us a new opportunity. To figure out how to make it work. So. And we have done that. And then Andrea came along and we butted heads on a few things, but we worked, worked it out. Just totally worked it out. Well, she pretty much worked it out. So, but.
How, how far does the retaining wall sit off that property line? What's.
Basically about eight feet because you got a room for the big of the footing.
Right.
You know, the angle of, of, you know, we don't plan on doing anything. My plan is to go one foot on our side of the property line and then start.
Can you point to, I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time finding that dimension on these drawings that. We have C two. We do. It would be page 72 of our packet. Thank you.
You see several numbers is 10.0.
You could, if you look at the north elevation of it, which is the end of it looking at the trash. You got seven foot nine to the face of the retaining wall.
Okay, yeah.
May I make a note kind of regarding these things? You, you don't have the back and forth and the different site plans that were provided. But originally the applicant had put a, they, it was actually lo- larger than eight foot. And then on top of that was the dumpster enclosure. So because of our ordinance, the way that it's written, I considered that one full. Because it's fences or walls are to be eight feet. So you can see that there was kind of appeasements that were made as we moved through this process. So. I read that as this retaining wall with a dumpster enclosure was actually over 16 feet. Because it was a continuous wall. So the applicant bumped it back a little bit and gave us like a little. One foot in between the trash and the retaining wall. There was kind of these appeasements that got us there. The whole thing is.
Just.
Not ideal.
Yeah, just moved it back from the retaining wall. You know, it would be easier, obviously, to build it all one thing. But so we moved it back one foot three from the inside of face of the wall. To accommodate, so we don't have the same 16 foot. So, but you know, the, as for the easements, we had them, we had them written up. They were shown on the original plans. Like I said, then I understand that he tore up the agreement. So I don't think it was ever submitted. Okay. So then we had to look at different ways to do this and. You know, we, we've done, I've done the best I could, you know, grade wise. And as for the, the storm that you're all concerned about, this whole site, if you look at the original site. We're actually reducing the amount of drainage on this site. And it all goes to the detain, detention back there with an overflow. So we had, you know, we had to work at the airport with that and so forth and so on. And if you look at the original. The original site plan that was existing. For him to get semis in there to turn around everything, he would have gone into the existing parking lot. To even use that. So I can understand why he's a little upset that he's not going to be able to go into our parking lot anymore, but. That would probably be the only way for a semi to come in there and turn around. Other than that, we tried to. You know, to meet all the standards. It's a, you know, we started this a long time ago. It's been going and going and I know that monies are not supposed to be involved in this. But you know, there's storage for certain things and the timeline, it's, it's unfortunately. You know, we went through one planner and then Andrea comes in, we have to go through the whole process again. And she came up with some new stuff. We ended up adding a couple of pole legs to make full magic planet. Landscaping hasn't changed. Too much, I don't think.
Was the money that's being spent, is that why you guys didn't do the cease and desist when you were told to cease and desist?
I'm not part of that discussion. I'm not pretty.
The builder.
Yeah.
It's the builder here.
I was here to get site plan approval and make it as best as I could in the situation.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Vanderbur? Vandenberg.
Will the builder avail himself to us?
What's that?
Will the builder avail himself to us? Will he speak?
Randy, you want to speak?
I, I have one for you. I apologize. It's kind of an A question, but I, I looked back at the previous minutes from December 4th. And I asked a question about the. Sewer and water being updated on the plans.
There's existing sewer and water that we're attaching to and I believe they're shown. On C two.
C two. Okay, let's try and find it real quick here.
Yeah, there's, there's shown on there. We're actually attached. Because all there is is a trench drain, basically, and some proposed future bathrooms. So we basically attached to the back of the existing building. They could probably be shown better. The construction plans about these.
Okay.
Okay. Can I ask the builder to come up and? Answer a few questions? Your name?
Randy Burry.
Randy Burry?
Yes.
B U R Y?
B U R R I.
U R R I.
Swiss, yeah.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Questions for Randy?
So tell us your side. I mean, there's a, there's two sides, so.
Yeah. So the, the building was, when we got it approved, obviously we had all the concrete and all the excavation was done and get the flat work done. And the drain systems done and all that and done through the inspection. And then there was an issue with the original homeowner. The, the builder, the, the, the builder, but the, the owner of the property, Mr. Baker. I was told he had a meeting with, we typed out a letter that we were needing from the original site plan that we had. Which I gave to Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker said he had him, he already knew the neighbor. He said, Randy, I'll take care of that responsibility. I'll go over and get a piece of paper signed by the neighbor. I said, yeah, and I said, fine. The other lady that, the, the first guy that. That's, yep. Told me kind of how to write it out. He said, hey, this, this is like a little format. So we typed it out for Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker then had a meeting with him is what he's told me.
With Brian.
Correct. And he had signed it. But I think he was.
May I make a point of clarification? He was referring to a meeting with Mr. McGovern and not Brian.
Yeah, with, with this, with the, with the, yeah. The, the two owners, the, the neighbors. Correct. So I was told, Mr. Baker, that he met with this neighbor of the property and. But he was in a meeting when he signed it. So we signed it quickly is how I was told from Mr. Baker. And Mr. Baker got a phone call from him or an email stating that he. After reviewing it, looking at it, he goes, no, 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 no. I, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this. So Mr. Baker. In response to that said, listen, I don't want to have a, an upset neighbor. So I'm going to go, so he ripped it up. I said, okay. We proceeded with the project.
Baker ripped it up.
Mr. Baker ripped it up. Yep. So he did get a signature from him, but he ripped it up because he wanted to honor what this man said and the neighbor, that he wanted upset neighbor. So then Mr. Baker, I said, oh, okay. So then we went ahead and put the building up. Then what ended up happening is our materials and stuff were sitting on his prop. Now there's quite a buffer between the two properties, but yes, we did go on some of his property. Some of our equipment, some of my supplies and stuff were on his property. Our idea was that we were going to do a really cool retaining wall, kind of like over there at Tanger Outlet.
Real quick, did you ever ask him permission to put that stuff on his property?
No, no, no.
Just to be clear, that's what a grading easement is, is a temporary agreement. So the permission is this legal easement agreement that was requested and then was denied. By the neighbor.
So the idea with Mr. Baker talking to the, the, you know, neighbor is that we get the retaining wall in. We had a landscaping company. We were going to put some, some landscaping there. We were going to put some edging there. So it's easy for him to mow. That's part of his property, right? Where the easement was going to come through. It was going to look really nice.
And at that point, the retaining wall was going to be seven feet, nine inches off the.
It was going to be right down the middle. I was going to go right on the middle, but the footing became an issue because the footing has to go a little. So that's why he pushed it back. He said, Randy, we better stay all on our property because we don't want to make the, the homeowner mad. Right. So we moved stuff back. Correct. So, okay, the footing is under the dirt, but we've got to move stuff back. So that's where that all came into play. It's all about this retaining wall. So. As far as the stop work order, so what happened there is we had the concrete on, steel was delivered. Okay. And this is coming from Indiana. It's not here local. They had brought in a huge. Amount of guys. I think there was maybe nine, maybe 10. This company came up, got a hotel, did all of this stuff. They were here. Now, my, it's no excuse. I get it. I'm just explaining to what happened. So they are all here. We get the sticker, I think Friday, I think it was a Friday or Thursday. These guys were already here. I get a phone call and I think it was from one of my guys. Hey, we got a red sticker out here. She came out, put a sticker, a stop work order. I thought, oh my gosh. So I called the owner from Indiana. I said, listen, we got a stop work order. He said, all my guys are here. Randy, can you get it? I said, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. And it was, and it was my, still my call though. It was still my call. I said, I know you're paying for all hotels and you guys are appearing, your food. And they put the building up. I did contact her. That, that's a fact because she contacted me and found, hey, what's going on? Now all the steel's there for the walls. There's other stuff need to be done. But I said, look, they wanted to keep going. I, no, 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 no. That's not what we talked about. I said, listen, this, get the steel up off the ground. Being on this guy's neighbor, he's already upset. Get this stuff off his property, you know, so that part went up. We moved everything back over to the owner's property and that's why it just sits on the ground. And I said, everything stopped. Now I did come back to ask her about the existing building. Because there's some work that needed to have be done on that, some remodeling. She was okay with that on the existing part. And so we have been doing work there on the existing part, but done nothing to the addition since that time. And that two day period right there.
So when the, when the red sticker went up, did you know that the Indiana Steel guys were putting up the, the framing, putting up?
No, I got a phone call immediately because they're the ones that called me. Hey, we got red, what? And so they were already in, in the process over the whole week.
So they didn't see the red sticker?
Yeah, they contacted me. So they were already.
They went ahead and started anyways.
No, they were putting the building up and one of the guys couldn't get in and go use the restroom because she had it on the door. Follow me instead of using the porta potty. They said, where's the key? They go back and say, what's this red sticker? I drive out there. They had, you know, two thirds of it already completed. Well, what's going on?
But you, you had called them and told them.
I called the owners and told them not to do this.
Oh, so you didn't know the red sticker was there until the steel company.
No, I didn't know. I didn't know because she contacted me right away. So she contacted me and said, hey, we put a red sticker on the door. We're going to hold off on the building.
My question is like, why didn't you tell the steel company, hey, there's a red sticker. You guys can't put the steel up?
I did do this.
So they did it on their own?
Yes. That's when I got back there on Friday. I mean, that Sunday, they had this bill. I said, hey, you guys can't go anymore. Stop now. You know, so now they're saying, well, we're going to have to charge you more because we can't put the steel because they want to keep going. They want to put the steel up and everything else. I said, listen, we don't got the bracing done. You need to just stop, stop. That's why there's a red stop, stop order here.
Is it possible for us to? As example, grab, find out who this steel company was in Indiana and prevent them from getting any permits here in Cascade like.
That is, I don't know. I, I would not worry about the steel company. I mean, I know the, the details of this and Mr. Burry was very aware that he was not to be building.
And that's why they.
They, they were aware that they were not to be building before there was any cease and desist order stuck to the door.
Okay.
Number Nordick?
So Mr. Burr, you were notified by Planner Hendricks that you were not to be building.
And exist in the new building any further.
And you went and you made a decision.
I called the, I called. I called, they owned, I called the steel company.
Doesn't matter, you're the, you're the builder, you're the one that's responsible. You made a decision. That your work was more important than following the laws of this township.
No, that was not the case at all.
So then why did the work happen?
Because they went ahead and did it when I told them not to.
You're responsible.
So when I showed up on Sunday, that's why I kicked him off, because I got a phone call.
Yeah, when it was done, I'm sure that was convenient.
Put it up. I'm not, this is the weekend, remember my family? And I get a call that they're out there doing this, I'm out there Sunday, they're upset, they said, Rainy, I said, listen, there's a stop work order here. We've got to get this resolved, you guys.
Your understanding of uh the trend, uh of how this went down, I'd love to hear your take on this, if you're willing to share it.
Oh, absolutely not. I will know, so in kind of figuring out what had happened, because, you know, the December four meeting was before I was here. Um, any planning commissioner, any public member, any judge can go back and listen to the December four meeting. And actually, Mr. Bruno.
I was actually wanting to ask that question, so if I can take this, what I'm struggling with. What she's about to say is, I typically visit these sites before I come to this meeting, and literally. This colleague over here was mad I didn't read the minutes sufficiently, but I typically read minutes about three o'clock. Leave my house about five o'clock, grab some dinner about six o'clock, hit the sites, and then I come here.
Unless he's playing pickleball.
Sweaty, played pickleball, sorry, holiday week. Um, I found it interesting, it was the first site I've ever visited where I'm about to, I'm out there visiting the site to look at something that's going to be built. And there is a backhoe building it already.
And this would be December four.
A backhoe behind the building?
Yes.
They're sitting there.
You look very familiar to me.
They're just sitting there?
It was not sitting there. The ground was broken and you were in a trench uh taller than you, uh when I walked over, I said, interesting, am I at? And I asked the address, and you said, yes, and I said, well, that's interesting, because I've never been to a, I've never reviewed a site, the construction had already started. Um, and I came to the meeting and actually mentioned that, and it is in the notes. So I'm I'm really struggling, it sounds like this has been a a rush. Before, like, if I'm T minus, T minus zero, the ground was already broken, so I I'm struggling with this, with the narrative.
You're talking before we.
Talking December fourth at approximately six P M. Yeah.
You mean Mike?
You you look familiar, I I'm not gonna see what.
My excavator, you mean? Was he out there like, like? I bet you, before we even started, where they came, took the trees down, they, not me, but there was like little.
Actually, I might have pictures.
That'd be great, before before we even started, I mean.
Trying. So. You were, Andrea, you were saying that this was never really approved, there was nothing. Nothing approved on this at all? I'm going back to December now, when when was the, when was it approved to have the footings poured?
So. Well, that is a building permit question. Um, but on December four, the site was approved. With. A grading easement filed at the count, to the county. As a condition of approval, a grading easement was to be filed to the county. So originally, when Mr. McGovern first brought this issue to my attention, which would have been three twenty-nine. They submitted also along with their building permit, this grading easement as part of their permit. So this was submitted to the county, but, I'm sorry, was submitted to the township, but never submitted to the county. At the Register of Deeds office. So it wasn't a recorded grading easement. Because of that, that was a condition of their approval that was found to be missing. Therefore, our ordinance says that if you violate part of your your uh conditions of approval, your.
Hold the permit.
Yeah, your site plan is no longer valid.
So there was no valid site plan to pour footings for the steel to sit on?
Correct, so, correct.
Pretty basic, as of March twenty-nine.
Correct.
Ahead of the December, I I'm sorry.
Were being excavated, so I have a series of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight pictures, nine. Nine pictures of excavation, the entire blueprint of where this new addition is going to be. Backfilled with sand, um and it looks like they have already created this seven foot grade differential. What date was that? And this is dated.
December fourth.
December fourth, I'm sorry, it's three sixteen P M, it's off by three hours.
So, so. Before you had approval on December fourth. You were excavating.
S- sand was brought in?
You were excavating.
The sand was being brought.
Seems to me like, tell me if I'm misunderstanding this even a little bit, it seems to me like we have established a pattern where you won't follow directions and.
No.
You like to do work ahead of when you're supposed to.
Because we didn't, when you're talking about the excavating.
See the photos before you comment?
That's what they're bringing, that's, they're bringing dirt in, because it's.
They're bringing dirt and making it the shape of the building? Who's in charge of the project?
I was in charge of the project.
With these trenches, with the trenches done for the footings.
But when I talked to the building inspector, he said, I can't be pouring any footings. He didn't have a problem when they took the trees out, cleaning up, cleaning up the land. And bringing the sand in, he said, but I can't pour any concrete, I can't be doing any of that stuff.
Without a permit.
And I didn't do that, and I didn't do any concrete until after I got the permit. None of that was done. It was just the grading, bringing the sand and the graded out. Yeah, I was just grading.
The permit was automatically revoked because he didn't file with the county.
Correct.
Hang on, he doesn't have a permit, he never has had a permit. And so, and permit was never issued, and so, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrea. Then the cement would have been poured without a permit.
I had a permit, and I have a permit for that. They gave, the building department gave me a building permit and everything to do this.
With a utility, with a grading easement that was never filed.
But when it wasn't filed, you didn't have it. It was permit get, the permit gets pulled.
Yep.
It doesn't.
That's not our, yeah.
It wasn't fired.
That was a requirement of you doing work.
And you guys knew you didn't have it.
And your own owner tore it up, that that was an interesting part for me, I thought he like.
They they didn't.
It's not like your owner did the honorable thing. But then didn't stop.
They didn't have what was required to proceed forward, this is, this is what I understand, so you didn't have permission to build this.
Yeah.
Remember, Reese?
Is the owner present?
But when I received the building permit, that that's what gave me the permit, I thought.
Is you lied to get that building permit?
No.
So when I got the building.
Building permit, sir, you didn't follow what was required in the site approval. You should never have had that, and you got it under false pretenses, that's what you don't understand. And I I don't, for the life of me, I don't understand why you think that you are above the law.
I don't, I don't think that at all, sir.
Your actions, your actions definitely demonstrate something different than what you're saying, sir.
So when I received the building permit, I thought I had submitted everything that they required.
Building permit under false pretenses, sir.
I guess if I. I I I'm intentionally trying to do anybody injustice or anything like this. When I submitted the, all the paperwork, the documentation of the building, the building inspector met with me several times, I need this, I need that. I'd had the inspections done, as I got them done and required, inspectors came out, they did look at the footings, they did check.
Did you submit what you needed to to the county?
Apparently, I didn't, I didn't realize that, because of what the issue came in.
Hold on, you didn't submit everything that needed to be submitted.
I'm I'm finding that out today, right now.
So.
Andrea, have you talked to the building department at all about how they sub, how they uh provided building permit without, I mean, did. Do they verify that? Items were submitted at county?
Per what was submitted to them, it was completely appropriate for them to submit the building permit.
So they must have had something that showed that it was re- recorded at the county?
No, that wasn't. That wasn't a required, that.
That was either a requirement of the building permit or it wasn't. So I I guess I'm trying to understand how this, how this occurred from a a building permit issuance perspective.
Because they wouldn't need.
Timmy knows where I'm going with this.
Exactly.
Because the requirement was that it was submitted to us, we didn't verify whether or not that it was submitted to the county.
Did state that they had that.
Yes, they submitted it to us as submitted to the county.
Oh, that's even better. So they 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 physically, so I want to make sure I understand this, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm going to be out of order, can I ask this question? All right, Andrea, I want to make sure that I'm really clear on this. When this applicant submitted their request for a building permit, they submitted to our. Planning department that they had fulfilled what was required in the site plan, which was inclusive. Of, okay, of the county. We didn't, but 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 they still claimed that they had this, and when in fact they did not, is that accurate?
And it sounds like sometime after that agreement got ripped up.
Correct. But it doesn't.
Uh, I don't, I, again, there's no evidence. There's no, I mean, the fact is. There was no agreement, there there's, I I mean, an agreement is.
It wasn't recorded, right.
Sign.
It didn't exist.
Rating.
Didn't exist, I think that's what you're saying. The fact, Chris is right, it was done under false pretenses. They came to us saying that they had done it, they hadn't done it, that they got the temper, the permit under false pretenses.
But we have two, we have two issues here that we as committee need to be keenly aware of, okay, one is. Actions took place under false pretense, the other is, we have a building department that issued a permit before all the ducks were in a row.
Do they chase, that's something standard that they check, double check that to make sure? The our, our.
It's gonna have to be, because.
I think that we've been very clear that since I started here, that we've implemented. Procedure is using B S and A, that we have a very clear path forward for anything that gets approved. At the planning commission does not get a building permit until all of.
Okay, that's what came out of the recommendation.
Yeah, that I.
Round hill.
That is very, very clear.
Same.
They had to get that from zoning, didn't they? I mean, he wouldn't give me the building permit without zoning, signing off, and they, and, okay.
Okay, remember, um, you know. I would like to make a motion to go to closed session.
I would close session, just.
I don't think we can.
You can't go to closed session, but you can uh close public hearing. Or go to public hearing. There is no public hearing.
They already have one. If you could ask the legal counsel.
Well, first of all, do you guys, anybody have any more questions for these gentlemen?
Session.
I'm not aware of any basis to go into closed session at this point, um if you wanted to go in closed session for uh to, for discussion with me. There needs to be um a written legal opinion to do so.
Okay.
So does anybody have any further questions for these guys about the current plan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burry, Mr. Vandenberg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like, I think we should invite Mr. McGovern up one more time to give us uh your perspective on this.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming in, Mr. McGovern.
There's a lot of additional context to this, that. I had a very brief conversation in lobby in my office with Mr. Baker. It lasted ten or fifteen minutes, it was very cordial, neighbor to neighbor. And uh. He flashed to me a drawing, he said the township loved this, it was a side drawing of the building. And uh. It was very eloquent, he's he's a flowery guy. And uh, said, we're gonna change a couple of things, but I'll make it all right, it'll all look beautiful, I'm done. And what the document he had was uh not the normal legal structure that I would. See, and I'm not an expert on these kinds of things, and I said, yeah, okay, fine, and I signed it. I was in the middle of something else, but I was talking to him. And so I reached back out to him and said, can I get some more drawings here to uh to see what it is you're doing? And uh he sent that over with with some handwritten notes on there about where he thought he needed to access my property. To a greater extent, a long shot than it is currently. Basically, this drawing, I don't see any retaining wall. What it was basically doing is running the current shared drive down to the end of this parking lot. And from my take on it, at that moment, I was not aware that this involved. Adding several feet of earth onto my property to make it level, I was just looking at a side drawing and a down drawing, and I. I sent him an email. The next day when I got these drawings within short order, I said, I need to resend what I've signed. It looks like you want to expand your business or run. Operate your business using my property, I've, I don't know what the setback is, it's thirty-five feet. Setback.
It's different from a shared, from the front.
Well, from my building to the lot line, I'm pretty sure it's thirty-five.
Ten feet. Side yard setback, it's ten feet.
I think it's thirty-five, but um, but anyways, uh. It it just looked to me like somebody was putting a building on a piece of land that was a little bit bigger than what it should be and trying to operate on. Some of my land, so that he, he immediately, he tore it up, he said, okay, fine, that's the way it was described. And again, I didn't realize how much earth that would have taken to raise up my property at that time. Um, so that that's, that's the backstory there, and the first time I ever became aware of this idea of an easement was looking over the counter. At a screen uh when I came into the township. And. Not only what, there was no signatures, I've never seen this documented in life. It was just an addendum on to a, a, a document. And and I was told it was a shared easement, and I had no awareness of this, and this was months later. As they're putting dirt onto my land. And uh. Couple other pieces of uh my perspective, I'm pretty sure Andrea told them. On the Wednesday of the week to stop. Construction. I work a lot, and I work. Lot of times, seventies a week. This construction accelerated. Uh, and went later into the evening, went, as already has been said, went over the weekend. And this just became a hub of activity.
Correcting the steel.
Oh, yeah, it did, I mean, I.
After.
After. And actually, I didn't know. That the, that the citation had a, she said, uh, I didn't know there was a, a stop order. And I I quite said, what's going on to Andrew, he goes, well, she explained the backstory, but the timeline on this, I'm pretty sure it was Wednesday, but. And it got constructed on accelerated basis, accelerated basis, probably for the next four days into the weekend.
Excuse me, Andrea, do we have record of when that was delivered to them?
So the inquiry was issued on March twenty-ninth. I had conversations with them, we actually sat down and had an appointment with Randy Burry. Our engineer, our building inspector. And myself, I'm not sure, Jim, if you were there for that meeting, I don't. I know, that was the first one, and that the entire building was erected after. We had a very clear conversation.
When was the cease and desist sticker issued?
The second. The second.
March second.
April or March second?
April second.
April second, which is the, which is a Tuesday. So, and but you said the, and so everything, Andrea, everything went up after the ticket was issued.
So there was a ticket issued after the work accelerated, because it continued, there was two times that I, there was clear.
And desist was issued on the twenty-ninth, the physical cease and desist was given to them on the twenty-ninth? Is that what you were?
The physical ce- cease and desist was given on four two. After it was established that they didn't have the documents, the first email was sent on three twenty-nine. The first letter.
Right.
Was sent.
On three twenty-nine?
Yep.
And that letter was, hey, stop working, or?
No, that was, we want to see if you're compliant.
Okay. And then the cease and desist was on the second, and do we, and was issued on the second, April second? And was the steel erected bef, after the cease and desist was?
There was, I don't know that all of the work continued, work continued after the weekend. I'd have to go back and look at pictures, because I'm not gonna sit here and say the wrong thing, because I need to have the timeline done.
Yeah.
Just a little bit more backstory about how the operation. Just second, remember, Reese?
A- Andrea, I don't see where the planning commission in the December four approval required. Them to have anything filed at the county.
I don't know that they did, but that was, that was part of their application. So regardless whether we said you have to have this filed, they filed a easement as part of their approved application.
Okay, because I don't see that in the, in the packet from December four where it talks about that. Nor do I see it in the motion or the minute.
It is in the packet, so, so it's fine.
In the packet.
It's in, it's item number seven in the packet. Applicant has been notified to confirm all permitted and agreements with the neighboring parcel, partial, any surface improvements. Item seven, so, okay, as long as we're covered.
Well, I, I guess you could read that a lot of different ways. It says applicant has been, been notified to confirm all permits and agreements with neighboring parcels. That doesn't necessarily say he has to file an easement at the county to get his building permit.
When you submit an easement as part of your approval. That becomes part of your approval. Again, that's why when I'm writing resolutions or when I'm making recommendations, I say. As submitted, you know, all your testimony and submitted documents are part of your approval. It doesn't really need to be stated though. If you submit documents to a planning commission for approval. And they approve it based on your submitted documents.
Brian said that we could go in the process of getting the easements. While it's being approved.
Okay.
So it'd be like a condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get those easements? Okay, so therefore the site plan approval was null and void. I mean, can we come? Did you get the easement?
Did you get the easements?
Did you get the easements? Okay, so then the site plan approval is, so then the, the stipulation was not met to get approved.
It'd be nice if Mr. Baker was here and we could ask him these questions too.
Mr. Baker was in Florida at the time all this was happening.
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Baker told me in writing that he was tearing up what I signed the next day, he told me. This, there was not a big time period difference. It was casual conversation. I already thoroughly reviewed the documents. I said, I can't do this, can't agree to it. He, he sent me back an email and said, I'm tearing it up. That was the next day. There wasn't any big time gap. It was done.
Okay. Yeah, good for him.
He also said he was going to, my recollection is move the, I'll just move everything back farther away from the lot line. I don't know if that was verbal or written. I'd have to look, but, um, they didn't, I don't know that they happened. But, uh, it doesn't seem like it did. But the original, what I had on that next day in my hand, there was no wall. There was no bifurcation of the shared drive. This was raising the thing up. Several feet, my, my property. As long as I wanted to raise my land, seven feet. There was no law needed.
Yeah, without the retaining wall, it'd be quite a slope coming down towards your property.
I didn't agree and they kept going, so it's kind of subtle.
Okay.
So just for clarification, let me, I took a picture of that site on April one with, with no construction. That was the same day that I met with Randall Burry and left and sent an email at ten-thirty AM on April one. Explaining exactly what happened in our conversation and said, thank you for your quick response. I look forward to written response from Mr. Burry later. Um, but it was very, let's see here.
This actually happened. It wasn't like an April Fool's joke.
No, this is a real.
Feels like one now.
He has agreed to summarize his plan in compliance in writing so that the township can respond appropriately. He has also agreed that any building materials currently stored on the neighbor's property will be removed and that no further earthwork will be conducted until the issue is resolved. Thank you. So apparently.
And then.
That didn't, and then the entire building.
The cease and desist sticker went out the second, which is the following day.
So that was the first when we met. I gue- I guess I wasn't clear enough that, you know, no work on this permit. Actually, I was very clear, but.
But then the sticker was issued and delivered the second, which is the following day?
That letter, the cease and desist letter happened four-two. The compliance letter, it was clear that nothing needed to happen there until we knew what was going on. And the twenty-nine, we met in person on April one.
Okay.
And in the time when I left, on, when he left the office on April one. They immediately went and erected the entire building. April one, it wasn't.
Well, well, if you say it was in the weekend, that's, oh, hold on, what, one, two, three, four? I'll, I'll say the weekend is, uh, five days later. Five days after the meeting. Which you clearly stated him to stop.
No, it was one, it was the same day, because I have pictures on April one.
Okay.
Of the building without any seal.
Okay.
And on April two, all of the seal was up. That's why I had to write a cease and desist. Because one of the builders came in to me and they said, didn't you tell them not to do that? Because they erected, erected the entire structure overnight.
Literally. Wow.
That next morning they drove through.
Member Reese.
Sir, if. They built this retaining wall seven foot nine inches west of your property line. Does that give you, uh, do you feel that gives you enough space? That's probably at least twenty feet near as I can tell from the equipment you have on the side of your building.
Well, also I should make a comment where, uh, previous speaker talked about me having to need to turn semis around in the parking lot. That's not, uh, the shared drive is, uh, intended for service vehicles. I mean, we're not unloading trucks, uh, at a truck dock. The, uh, your question is, is seven foot nine enough? It's, it's the, it's the segment before that, that. Um, bifurcates the drive, which cuts it, so I can't, I have half a drive.
I'm, I'm saying the wall would be seven foot west of the property line.
At, at some point. It, it doesn't start that way though.
Okay, so here's.
It bifurcates the drive much sooner than that.
Okay, is that?
Can you see where the angle, the little angle, the little angles?
Page seventy is probably a good.
You look at the first sheet. You can see what's existed. And what the drives are. And what we have to do now.
Which, which detail was that again? Was that C one?
That's the existing drive, what, what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see majority, it's split right down the middle.
I do.
Until you get to the parking lot, when the majority of the baby, you know, is, is, uh, private. So if you can get it down right now, I mean. We can use both drives. I mean, that's not an issue.
Where does your retaining wall start?
The retaining wall, if you look, are you guys looking at an aerial? Well, you can look at your plan. The retaining wall pretty much starts at the beginning of Mr. McGovern's. Building.
Corner, front corner of my bed.
Yeah, real close.
Uh, C, C one.
I spotted it started further back than that. No.
Well, it starts off with the curb. And there's a curb that goes a certain amount of ways before we.
Because they extended the parking lot out. I see, right? I was thrown off. Okay.
It's supposed to go right here and, and.
God, C one will show you where it kind of starts.
Yeah, I can't read that dimension. Off of his, uh.
Seven feet nine inches. I can't read it from here.
You can?
I cannot.
Yeah, seven feet nine inches.
Looks like it's sixteen feet, fourteen feet.
So.
I think it's fourteen.
May, may I make a suggestion to the planning commission?
Absolutely.
Maybe it may be appropriate to table this so that we can get a legal opinion on what. Um, are reasonable land use standards for this application?
Well, my concern with tabling it is now they'll put the signing up.
Well, just to be clear, they're allowed to put the siding on the building that didn't have a site plan review approval because they got, you know, they did siding without. I, I agree. That's why I immediately issued the cease and desist letter. Honestly, that's why I had to cite them because there was a cease and desist and the work continued. That's why they got a citation on top of the cease and desist.
Yeah.
So. Uh, the question is, you know, Mr. McGovern has some concerns. Are his concerns valid enough for the planning commission to make? Adjustments to the site plan?
I could. I could make a motion to table to give the neighbor an opportunity to do research on his part and for our staff and the planning commission. To, uh, follow up with legal counsel on how we should proceed.
Could we amend that to add, uh, talking to Eric, the engineer? I'd like to.
And to get, and to get some communication with our engineer.
Yes.
And maybe to re- re- rate to the, to the property, what cease and desist actually means and not that nothing is to be done. Nothing is to be done.
And I think it would be good if Mr. Baker was.
I'm gonna say it a third time. Nothing is to be done.
You, you do have the engineering review in your packet. And I have the email from Eric just saying this more. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else you want from Eric.
Well, if that wall changes in its configuration, we will certainly need to.
Yeah, so that's actually.
At that time.
They had to resubmit. As soon as they changed the wall and made it not just a grading, you know, a grading. It became a new site plan and they had to resubmit their most recent site plan to Eric. Who said that he's happy with all of it. He has appro- he said he has recommended approval. So I can understand wanting to talk to Eric, but you have his whole sta- staff review. He was in on these meetings. He understands. The neighbor's concerns from an engineering standpoint. Our engineer has done a full review of this with all of the submitted application material that you have and has, has made recommendations.
Well, we can leave him out of it, I guess.
I'd love to hear from him still. I mean, if he comes in via on the phone just to ask questions, but that, that's fine. If you don't want to put that there, that's. I think tabling is what matters right now.
We have a motion on the floor.
Support that motion.
It's been supported by Member Nordic. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, uh, I do. I, I'm gonna make it clear, like, I think Mr. Baker should be here. I'm, you know. I'd like to talk to him about what's happened. I, this township has had a history of builders that, that choose not to participate in our rules. And I think we do need at some point to draw a line in the sand. I don't know if it's here.
I agree.
My gut says it might be. And, um, I, I really take issue with what's happened. And I would, and I know that's not on you. You're, you're the architect, but I would, I would appreciate it if you could certainly influence the owner to be present, given all the issues. We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion. I, I. Hang on, hang on. The motion is on the floor.
There was my discussion asked on here from.
Number Norda.
Ha- has all work stopped at this point? Nothing. We're, we're done right now until this, you guys.
Have we taken pictures documenting that? Okay.
Okay. Member Bruno, I have a, a question for, for, uh, Mr. Nordic. So in your statement of, you know. This might be the, the time for the line in the sand. Um, your motion to table as opposed to maybe deny is that you would like legal counsel to weigh in before you were to maybe.
Yeah, I, I just support. It wasn't my motion. It was Scott's and I supported it.
So yes, it was all those things.
For me to make a comment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Member Reese. We have a comment.
I just wanted to ask one quick question.
Sure.
Based on everything that's happened here tonight, is staff still comfortable with its recommendation in the packet?
Yes, based on the material that I have provided, you, that I have got from Mr. McGovern. Again, some of this stuff, like Leslie said, we have the opportunity to approve this based on the land use. Requirements within our zoning ordinance. Their behavior, tha- that will be taken care of with the citation with the courts. That's not our purview. We have a land use decision on if we want to waive the requirements of. The buffer yard C. The, the placement of the driveway.
I don't mean to interrupt, but, but Leslie specifically said we could consider their behavior in our decision. So you're, what you're saying is in direct contrast. I, I, I just want, I, I'd like to understand. What i- is it or is not something we can, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I'd like, because Leslie told us something that is directly different than what you just said.
I'll let Leslie, go ahead.
Perhaps, yeah, perhaps I can clarify. What I'm, what I mean is to the extent that what has happened or the prior activities of the builder and the property owners impact or affect any of the standards that the planning commission must consider when just making a decision on this application. Then it's certainly fair game to take that into account. With that said, I do want the planning commission to be careful that we don't simply look back and fail to consider what standards we do need to, um, focus on when we're considering these types of applications. So I guess maybe to, to better clarify, the point I was trying to make is there may be standards that we need to consider that are impacted by what has happened in the past as it relates to, um, you know, uh, previous activities, failing to comply. And, and to the extent that, um, applications were submitted based on incorrect or incomplete information. However, if the application needs, i- if the application is otherwise compliant with the standards of the zoning ordinance as it currently stands. You know, the planning commission needs to, you know, not focus too much on what has happened, um, you know. As it relates to what we need to focus on going forward. So. Long story short, I, I, I don't want to belabor, you know, the history of this particular project too much. Um, at the expense of not focusing on what conditions and requirements were already set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Leslie. Member Reese.
Leslie, uh, i- if you would, can, can you give us some perspective on the, on the potential retaining wall being proposed that's, um. In this shared access drive that appears to not have an actual recorded easement? Um, wh- wh- do you have any, any take on this as far as? If there's any, um. Standing here for the, uh, one neighbor to say, hey, you can't build a wall in the middle of this drive that, that were shared?
I would definitely need to take a look at, um, you know, what conditions were originally imposed back in December. Um, I, forgive me, this is, tonight is the first night that I've, we've even been involved in this particular project. We have, we're not involved in the citation and I'm not familiar, other than what was discussed tonight and what, as to what the history was. I would be happy to review all the necessary information and provide a legal opinion in writing. So that's something that we can discuss, um, at a future planning commission meeting if the planning commission decides to table this particular issue. Um, but I, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure what occurred at the prior meeting, uh, on this. On the original building in order to give a, a more detailed. Legal opinion on that.
No, I, 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 I heard what needed to hear. Thank you.
So Leslie, I have a question. Um. Is it appropriate? Considering that they didn't have filing with the county. And that they continued to do work after the cease and desist. So they, they didn't do the filing, so their, their permit was invalid. They got a cease and desist. They continued to build. Would it be appropriate then, from a legal standpoint, to make them tear down the existing building that they built without the proper permissions?
That would be something that we would, um, pursue as part of a court action. I wouldn't have the township, um, on its own initiative, demand removal without a court order. And that would be part of the citation. Now, you know, whether or not we pursue that would likely depend on the outcome of this particular application, uh, to the extent that as it exists, it would not be compliant with the, uh, the. Manner in which the planning commission approves it, then that would be one thing. Um, but pursuing it as it is right now, to me, seems like it would be putting, uh, the the, would be, um. Premature until we get a decision from the planning commission on the pending application.
Thank you, Leslie. Member Reese.
Mr. Chair, I believe I have a motion with support on the table and I'd like. Mr. Chair, I believe I have a motion with support on the table, and I'd like to call for that, I'd like you to call for that vote.
Can you repeat the motion just so I know?
The motion was to table to have legal counsel have his opportunity to review this, to have the. Engineer available via Zoom at the next meeting.
Whenever we cover it.
Whenever we cover this, and there was one other item.
To make sure that the cease and desist is in effect until.
May I just, so you made a motion, then you had a question, um, I did have a question. I just, I I I I try to be really uh have empathy, and I went back and I read the minutes and gave you an opportunity, and I just want you to to declare to. You s- you stated that you were fully aware that this had to be filed, and that's correct.
That mean, I designed it.
Okay.
But someone within your.
You were in the backseat.
Your application.
Okay.
And I did do that. That was not over there. The letter from this owner and the guy I'm working for, Josh Baker, I had put that into record as well. But I do know when I got the file from downtown Grand Rapids, stuff that I need to submit. They would give you the building permit until they sign off from zoning, so that was another day or so. Then they called and ready, we got the paperwork signed on zoning, saying that they are, you were approved, come give up your building. That's where I started.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, it's been supported. I would, I like a roll call vote on this, Andrea.
All right, Member Nordhook.
One more time on the motion.
Table it.
Table it. Motion was to table to give staff an opportunity to review things, to get to have us communicate with legal counsel. Have them review the case because as she just stated, she's not familiar with it, I think that's important here. Uh and then also, um, I think that's pretty, that pretty much sums it up.
The engineer.
Yes.
We have the engineer area involved.
Yeah, re- re, and then just make sure the cease and desist is still in effect.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, roll call vote, please, Andrea.
Member Nordhook.
Yes.
Member Nord High Dyke.
Yes.
Member, wait, who just said yes, you just, okay, member Roland.
Yes.
Member Reese.
Yes.
Member Richardson.
Yes.
Member Bruno.
Yes.
Chairman Moxley.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you. Hey.
Sure.
So. There is no decision. On the site plan. That meets all the zoning ordinances that was submitted to them.
Correct. Decision is table it.
You're tailing that, but the decision isn't based on whether it meets all the ordinance.
We want legal, we want legal to review it, I I that that, so the decision's been made, yeah, so.
It's done, there's.
You're not helping your cause.
You're really not.
Okay.
If I gotta change uh. What the reason is I have to change?
I think for right now, you're in a holding pattern.
I'd encourage you to follow up with staff with any other questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Van den Berg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern, thank you, Mr. Burry.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern.
I think that brings us to Article nine, doesn't it?
I'd like to acknowledge any visitors, those wishing to speak, your comments are limited to five minutes per speaker.
Yeah.
Technically, you can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McGovern.
Footnote, uh just for the information, this interaction between the old property owner, the original interaction. Uh and the rescinding and terror was back in uh October. That was on October tenth, he tore it up, and I rescinded it on on October eleventh, that's really early in this whole.
Yeah.
Timeline stuff, I mean, it was way known by all parties, way before all these filings.
Before they came here in December, they knew that it wasn't something that they were gonna get.
Absolutely.
Have you forwarded that to our staff?
I will, absolutely, I think I might have already, but I could get lost in all this shuffle.
Yeah.
The other thing is, um. One of, not this gentleman, but an owner, I took him to be an owner of of the architect from Community Lobby. And wanted to know if there's anything I can do to make this right, at that moment, I said, yeah, operate this on your property. Because I had been over there several times, called the sheriff twice, that excavator was clearly on my property, I couldn't get him to move it off. I I've got a fiber optic line that runs out to thirty-sixth street, I'm afraid they're gonna tear it up. I tried calling Miss Dig, and uh they said, no, the the person doing the digging has to make the phone call, I asked the property owner to call Miss Dig. He said, yeah, yeah, I'll do that, I never saw any flags. The way this whole thing is operated is what they say and what they do is completely disconnected, and it's on a steamroll basis.
I have a request, I have a request for you. If you see any building going on out there, please call me, Andrea.
Yeah, I've seen activity, but I don't know if it's on that warehouse structure.
Just keep, just keep an eye on it.
Mr. McGovern, that steamroller is gonna be going in the other direction, I assure.
Oh, yeah, we're not happy.
Yeah, I just, it's really been upsetting because I I'm not used to operating this way, you know, everything's uh.
It's upsetting us too, that somebody's pulling this.
Yeah, I mean, I I went over there several times, talked to people that said they were the foreman, I had the, can I share if there are twice? It was a stake that that was brightly painted, it said property line, which is twenty feet over onto my property. The sheriff goes, I I don't, I don't, I don't know how to judge this, I go, it's it's not even close. He's like, so then the next day I called, the surveyors come out, put stakes down the drive and sprayed on the, on the asphalt.
Andrea's quite the pit bull, so rely on her, she'll go after them.
She's she's.
She does, she's not, I don't think she's happy with this either.
Yeah, it's not been on.
We need to keep moving.
Okay.
Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, anybody online, Nick?
Nobody online.
Okay, moving on to Article eleven, other business, the draft zoning ordinance amendments, table of contents and use tables.
This is not on the agenda for discussion today, we're just trying to make sure that we get stuff out, we have this on the agenda for the seventeen. So, we're gonna continue to try to do this, please take a look, um, Member Bruno has contacted us. Asking for some kind of education of what's new and what's.
Thorough.
I'm trying to be serious here.
Sorry, I don't mean any disrespect by laughing.
Please let her be serious, because I'm simplifying the work for everybody, I I think this is gonna be a lot easier, so pay attention.
Will lightly, I don't think much will change on this, but you might get a a different version that shows all of the items that are new items italicized. And then I'm thinking that if something changed and it's new to that zone district, the permitted use will be italicized in the table. But we really are um trying to get away from um. We're we're trying to get to more tables, to a clean zoning ordinance that has everything in the most logical space for us to find it. So you'll see, like I said, you have the um table contents, which will kind of show where everything will be, there's some added chapters that you'll see are new in there. And then the use tables, they've integrated in a lot of what we've talked about in the um frontline preservation um. Meetings, so you'll see some new things that are are written into there, when you give the definitions chapter, you'll see that everything that's in this chart will be consistent with the definitions that go. You know, in that section of the ordinance. Please, you know, dig through it, send any comments to me or Danielle, um, we'll take a look at those, we'll integrate those, and you'll also see in your packet that we have um. The. Zoning ordinance um work sessions that will be held at the township. Um, Member Bruno had mentioned maybe that now that our hours have changed at the um township, we've got those scheduled from two to four. But maybe some of those, if 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 it would work for some of you who have work schedule, obviously, most of you are are first shift. Um. It may be helpful to have a meeting from seven to nine, could I kind of get some feedback if?
That would be, that would be better for me, I mean, a two to four is a little tough.
Yeah, we tried to make it as late as possible.
Unless it's at a bar or some.
But but just just for clarification, it was, it was AM nineteen. You think she meant PM or AM?
Yeah.
He um, I hope.
No.
She was talking.
Well, we could do two to four at Watermark, on the back deck.
Well, seriously, I.
Public meetings.
Public can come.
Yes, so there's, I think there's serious sincerity to the clarification, I recommend to, I could come like. Like we know the frontline preservation, I could come an hour before I start my workday, so it was seven to nine AM, I'd probably go for the first hour, were you thinking PM?
Uh, yeah, I'm not gonna come here at seven.
If it was seven to nine AM, I think we have a better chance of picking up more people than at two to four on the afternoon.
That's fine. Did you say seven AM to nine AM?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't need to be involved.
Convenient time.
It's fine by me.
You guys are far better at this than I am anyway, so I don't need to be there.
And then can I ask another question though? Um, so I I looked at the tables, and again, I don't have any of this memorized, it'd be nice if we could know what changed, you've already addressed that. But looking at the table of contents, I see we're adding chapters and they look great, like Aggratour is, and there's a good one. But is it to be assumed, like, um, it still has the old uh district names, so what's, like, there's R three residential that'll become rural conservation or something and no?
That's a whole new, so what I would do is just send us all those emails, those questions, and we'll put them in another memo.
Okay.
Versus getting into it since it's nine thirty and not.
Okay, sure, sure, sure.
Just send us all those, that's what we're giving to you weeks, weeks before.
Fair.
A personal request uh on the uh table of contents and the charts you had in there, the multicolored charts. Uh, my computer printer doesn't work so good, so any chance you could uh make a one set for me? And I'll stop by and pick it up.
Absolutely.
Some time tomorrow.
Three hole punch.
Thank you.
That would anyone else like?
No, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Member Reese.
Uh, on other business, um, I had a question for Leslie regarding um procedure. And my question would be, uh, I believe that the planning commission has the ability to. Um reconsider or or rescind a vote that has taken place at a prior meeting. And I'm wondering if that is accurate or not.
You said rescind a vote?
Yeah, like un- undo, reconsider, um, is that, is that something that, i- is that accurate or is that inaccurate?
According to the Robert's Rules, it needs to be done at the same meeting.
At the same meeting, not the following meeting?
Correct.
Was that if it's the meeting following the meeting at which the business took place, is that not accurate?
My understanding of Robert's Rules is that it must be done at the same meeting, um, the following meeting is for mi- and I believe Laura, Ms. Genovich. Uh discussed this at a prior meeting with you, that the minutes must be uh adopted at the following meeting. But when it comes to reconsider, motions for reconsideration, they are um to be done at the same meeting. Now, a- a- as is in your bylaws, Robert's Rules is not a legal requirement, um, and I I believe your bylaws specify that. Uh while the planning commission should follow Robert's Rules as closely as possible, it's not a hard and fast requirement. Um, so uh, so to the extent that uh. The planning commission wants to defer from those, then then you may, uh but a- as as to how Robert's Rules of Procedure uh function. Motions for reconsideration are to be done at the same meeting at which the original decision was made at.
Okay. Thank you. To follow up on on what, on what Member Nordic said, um, so do you share the same view on the minutes as? As Laura, or do you have a different opinion there?
That minutes must be uh adopted at the following meeting.
Correct.
Yes, that is required under the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you.
Okay, Member Bruno.
I have a clarificate, uh two questions, clarification on that, um, I serve on a different committee, and that that struck me as odd, and then I I I can forward to you, but I believe Attorney General Nessel in twenty twenty-two, so post pandemic, two years. Clarified that, and I I believe that differs, so are you taking into account that? New um clarification from AG Nessel or no?
I would have to review the legal opinion you're referring to, but it's my understanding that the Open Meetings Act requires that minutes be approved. At the meeting, at the next meeting subsequent to the meeting at which the minutes refer to.
That's fair, I'll I'll try to get that authority, I meant to do that.
Okay, a couple.
Rob, did you have something?
Are we still on the other business?
Yeah. Yes.
General comments, if you will. Um, there were two things that happened today that I think we might. You know, sort of disallow going forward, maybe. Um, for example, in our packet, we have a train advertisement. Um, like page thirty-one through thirty-six, I don't think that's appropriate to have. You know, a job pamphlet, basically something that you would give like college students, like thrown in our pamphlet, it's bizarre. If you look at the PDF, thirty-one through thirty-six.
But they can change the industry in a one industry world.
Um, because it doesn't, this really has nothing to do with what they were applying for, it is just basically an ad. And then the second thing that I thought, I mean, I think Mr. McGovern was pretty gracious about it. But typically, you know, when the other people were talking, he was in the back.
I noticed that too.
Quiet.
Yeah.
Not interrupting, and then when he was up here, someone uninvited essentially, like, kind of charged forward and stood right next to him. Now, he seemed fine with it, but typically, we shouldn't allow that sort of thing.
I agree, we should have done a better job of that.
May I, may I just, you know, reference our bylaws, so our bylaws say that. Someone that's speaking from the public has five minutes, and then they have discretion, but the chair has discretion for an applicant to allow for more time. So technically, you know, it's a public meeting, there's usually not this back and forth between planning commissioners with members of the public that aren't the applicant. Usually, they would submit their public comment, we would give them five minutes, we would hear them. And and that would kind of be the end of it, you know, technically. So in our applicants, our, per our bylaws, are awarded or, you know, given more time per the chairs.
Discretion.
Does the chair have the discretion to give a public comment more than five minutes if they deem?
Technically, not in our ordinance, I mean, in our bylaws, we could, we could ask Leslie out those, but I mean, the adopted bylaws say that each public speaker is given five minutes. And then applicants are given more.
And typically, I mean, this is unusual, right, I mean, typically, we are a little tighter than this, but this was.
Yeah, what, I mean, not to be like, only, but that's, that's not typical. Usually, the chair recognizes someone, and there's not this back and forth between neighbors, and that happens quite often in this planning commission, I. It's it's technically against our I- our our bylaws, and it's not typical in planning commission.
Sure, fun, though, okay.
I can, I can weigh in on that too, Andrea, briefly, um, yeah, a- a- and and. You know, of of course, the chair has discretion to um permit other members of the commission to ask questions of. Any member of the public wishing to, you know, wishing to speak at any time during a other public comment or a public hearing, but. Um for a sense of decorum, typically, we recommend that uh we limit uh, you know, back and forth between members of the public and the planning commission. Um unless it's uh, you know, an extenuating circumstance like the neighbor here, um where there was a, you know, a factual dispute as to the. Existence of the shared driveway uh agreement, so um it's more of a decorum uh sort of rule, uh rather than necessarily a hard and fast, uh, you know. Approach to the bylaws, but um, you know, that's just more for, you know, containing the flow of the meeting, um and I also just wanted to clarify, I was um. In talking about the minutes question, what I meant to say was, changes to the minutes can only be made at the subsequent meeting after uh the meeting at which the minutes refer to. So um that's, that's in the Open Meetings Act, so the planning commission could approve the minutes at a following meeting. But any changes or corrections to the minutes must occur at the subsequent meeting after um, after which the uh change was made, and that's under. Section nine of the Open Meetings Act.
Question for you, Leslie, this is uh Ralph. Um, can we be allowed to make comments, uh suggested changes to the planning commission secretary before? to the Planning Commission Secretary before, uh, uh, the next meeting? In other words, if we had it into Chris, uh, about a little less than a week after the meeting takes place, would that be allowed?
Certainly. My only caveat to that would be just ensuring that if, if you are doing it in that manner, circulating the draft minutes to the members of the planning commission and allowing each member to um, respond to a member of Nordike directly with any corrections they may have, that we're doing that, um, one-on-one rather than as kind of a, uh, you know, a, a CC with all members of the planning commission on that email such that we don't get into a, um, potential deliberation scenario that would violate the Open Meetings Act.
Well, my goal is to spend less time reviewing the meeting minutes at the meeting if possible. Uh, and try to get every, our comments to, uh, Chris Nordike in advance, so he can put together a, uh, I'd say the second draft of the meeting minutes.
Sure, yes, I think, I think that would be.
Right, like it, it's, I'm not, I'm not super detailed. Like I, I looked at him and what did I say to you? I think I texted you and said, yeah, I think it was generally what I saw, right? And Ryan is much more detailed and it's good. We offset each other well, right? And, and so if there are things that need to be fixed, I think we, we can do it, but just send it to us both because I, I will do my best, but I won't pick up everything.
Is there any possible way that Andrea, you can get just the minutes to Ryan earlier than Thursday? Give him a couple more days rather than, I, I'm just asking. I, it's.
Here, here's like, there could be a new procedure.
I did, but I don't go into the detail.
So, but, but here's, here's the problem. So, so I, I, I get it.
Yeah. I'm just trying to give you more time to look at it.
But, but here's the problem. I, I don't want more time.
Ask for us all to get them earlier.
With that expectation comes that you then want me to read it a second time.
Can I, can I throw something out here?
I don't know why. We've never had this issue before.
Yeah, exactly. We, we, we've been approving minutes here forever. And we had two meetings that were a little bit of a train wreck.
Yeah.
Okay, but tonight I thought went very reasonable. We had the minutes approved and we were moving on to the next part of the agenda within seven minutes. And actually, the meeting started a minute late. So it took six minutes to get through pledge, attendance, and minutes.
That's pretty.
I don't think that's bad. I think that's reasonable.
There was nothing in there that couldn't have been done Friday.
I, I don't disagree with you, Timmy, but I, what I'm trying to get at is that I don't think that that warrants a whole process change because it took us six minutes to get that far into the meeting.
I will respectfully say though, you are a trustee. I'm a consultant. If you want me to block out from hours three PM to five PM on Fridays, I charge two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. If you want to send me a, a standing open PO blanket purchase order, it'll be done on Fridays between three and five PM.
There is the door.
That's for it.
There's the door.
Just letting you know. I, I gotta do my real job first.
I, I guess before adopting a, a major policy change, I would like to see how things.
It's not a major policy change.
Okay, it's just a different process.
If you need a period, put somewhere on a sentence that can be done on a Friday. Yeah. Let, let's just see how it goes the next couple of meetings, okay, before we make a major change. Uh, as proposed here.
May I?
Yes.
So, on, on all this talk of, of, uh, bylaws, and then I think there's actually a, a planning commission ordinance. I guess I wanted to bring up, I saw an email, I didn't see it in, in the other business, moving dates in August. We didn't, we did a, I think a resolution in December with these dates. And I thought the kind of, the concept was planning a year out in advance that we try our best. Now, granted, I, I was gone most of the month of February. I moved around some stuff with my ch- my children, um, to be available, these dates in August. And it appears that there's an email that's suggesting moving them. My question is, is there debate on that? Is there, um, do we have to make a?
Would we amend our, yeah, would we amend our resolution then?
Yeah, we have to amend. These, these dates, to me, I would, I don't know, missing some of these.
Is Leslie on? Can we ask her that? Because we made a resolution at the beginning of the year for this, the calendar, right?
So the planning, the, the board sets a date, dates for all of us to begin the year. We can change those dates.
I thought it wasn't in our trigger.
We, we set those.
We set those.
Yeah, we set those. No, we, 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 we provide those dates to staff, which then provides them to the board.
And we, did we not approve them?
Because we, we had a discussion, a, a lengthy discussion about the holiday.
Yeah. This is, yeah, we spent almost entire meeting on this. That, that's kind of the frustration if you, um.
I mean, Leslie, if we made a resolution for the, for the dates, would we not need to amend that resolution if we're going to change dates? Because I thought as part of, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I would adopt a resolution changing whichever dates or date, uh, of a meeting that you were going to reschedule. And then, of course, um, post the appropriate, uh, rescheduled regular meeting notice as required under the Open Meetings Act.
Well, why don't we just make a quick resolution if we want to change dates?
Sure, and I, I just, I would miss, um.
Well, here's the thing, right? Don't miss, listen, this is just me to you, right? You don't miss things with your kids for this. This is important, but that's ten times more important, right? And you just don't make that meeting.
But can we, well, can, can others not make those meetings? Because, I mean, August is a prime time for the case.
I don't think.
Already scheduled.
I don't think I can make the twelve.
The twelve, okay, let me, let me say this. So we scheduled the twelve and the fourth. We had, we have six scheduled address applications in the next two meetings. One of them passed, one of them got tabled. I suspect that maybe that one won't get cleaned up by the twelve. There's kind of a lot of pieces there, maybe it will. But we have the meeting on the seven, on seven fifteen. We have four items that we'll have complete, two fancy, no, I'm sorry. An accessory building. Another type one special use that I can't remember the details of right now. I think it was an amendment to an accessory building. A site plan review for, uh, returning site plan review for seventy-five, uh, fifty-seven, fifty-five, that, the one on Thirty-second Street on the east side of Craft that had the four industrial, um, condos that we tabled.
What, what, what are you doing? I'm confused.
I think she's listing what's coming.
This will coming for.
Future meeting.
Our meeting on the fifth. But if that's coming.
That's July.
Move the dates, does it?
Well, yeah, why do, why do we, why are we moving the date? I guess I should have asked that question.
Eleventh, right? We have two meetings in August regardless. We're just debating, why are we moving the dates?
Can Madison fill in for you? Is that?
So.
Or Jade?
Put, potentially.
Okay.
We'll run it through. My point is.
You could join on Zoom.
Oh, I actually can join Zoom. Okay, then maybe that's the best solution.
I was joking, but that's pretty good, right?
No, you can't.
That's right, you can, we can't.
August nineteenth was the date that we had originally.
Can she join on Zoom?
Yeah, because she's planning. She doesn't, we have to be here.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have five items though. We had six, one of them passed. We have five items for tho- for the, all those August meetings. And then we're supposed to talk about the change tables on, on the fifteenth. I have four items on the agenda and I was trying to keep the fifteenth open for the change tables. What we can do, we have those two residential properties. We have, we'll have two complete industrial properties. One is, is the property on Thirty-second Street. The second one is Quick Trip application, which is a proposed application to go in PUD ninety-five, which is on Broadmore in Sixia and Patterson, is it Patterson? Where the, it's the southwest parcel in the township. All of those.
I'm not, like, do you have something you, is it important we're following this? Because I'm not really following it all.
Things have, then we could easily cancel the August twelfth meeting. We canceled the first meeting that we had on the resolution. You know, we had two meetings that got canceled because of the elections. And we, and I brought back some dates to you months ago to say, hey, look, we've got a lot of stuff coming in August, but we're just, you know, could we reschedule this? And you said, let's just cancel it in August. We'll cut, we'll cancel the August fifth meeting that was on the original, um, resolution.
All we need is four people, right, to show up?
And then we said, if there was, yeah.
So I guess just do, do the meeting and whoever can make it, make it and whoever can't.
No, all I'm suggesting is we, I just, we need to, we need to pass a resolution as off, we're gonna change the dates. Like, let's, let's do that if, so we're official.
Well, we might as well then pass a resolution cancelling the August five meetings. We didn't pass it by resolution when we canceled them. So.
And we're canceling it why again? Because I thought, as I said, you could make the nineteenth.
Is canceled.
August sixth.
We canceled it previously because of the election. We've hit, we canceled the first meeting in August, the first meeting in November. We can cancel it on all and push these applications way back. Or we can just tentatively put on the twelfth meeting and cancel it if we get the next four applications through planning commission.
So August twelfth and twenty-fourth would be ours.
So can we just put it in the agenda for the fifteenth? Andrew, will we amend the dates? You'll have a much better idea of which dates you want us to be here. Maybe do a poll to make sure people can attend if it's not a scheduled date. Is that reasonable?
So, yeah, the dates that I propose for those are based on the poll that we did a while back.
Okay. It may be worthy of refreshing that just because it's summer vacation, so.
Don't worry about me if I can't make it.
Email is the best.
I know, I won't be here.
What?
So your email is the most current dates? Yes.
The email is the most current dates. Now we're saying that we're writing a resolution to correct the last two meetings and to propose the new meetings.
We should have been the resolution. If we have a resolution on place for the, the current calendar.
Okay, so I'm gonna meet with the chair vice chair next Monday to go over those four items. We have the staff reviews almost completely done for those, likely because of the holiday. We'll have the agenda to you early. So please, when you get, you know, the agenda, if you have any questions about those four items, reach out, send whatever you need to, set up a meeting with me or Madison, Teraz, I don't. If you need to, we can discuss whatever you need to. Those four items will be coming then, and then we're planning heard the conversation with Chair Vice Chair about the agenda. We'll put the change tables on there. We'll get as far as we can. If we can get all the questions to these items answered really fast, we can put through. And talk about the change tables. We'll get as far as we want with the change tables. We'll table it. And hopefully, if all those things get approved, we move on to the twenty-sixth or the nineteenth based on, with very little, if any, action items from applicants. So we can really focus it on the zone. That all understood?
Yep.
Okay, we will bring a resolution on seven fifteen.
Okay. All right, uh, any other business? Uh, just want to mention that the, uh, dedication for the Friendship Park was great. Uh, the weather cooperated, thankfully. Spring, we're gonna get rained out on that. And, uh, hopefully I'll see all of you on the Fourth of July here at the Township Hall. I'm bringing my grandkids. And, uh, we're gonna have a blast. I, I'd like to spoil them rotten and then send them back to their parents, uh, a few days later.
I'm sure Josh likes that.
Don't give them any sleep.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, support.
Motion by Member Nordike, supported by Member Reese, to adjourn at?
Nine forty-five PM.
Forty-five.
Although it's a favor.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?